Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Imperial Beach City Council of February 3rd, 2021. And I would like to call the meeting to order. Council members and staff, please mute yourselves and when speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name. I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting and thank everybody for their patience and understanding as we continue to improve our teleconference meeting process. But we all can't wait. We don't do this anymore. We all can't wait till we're back together in person, seeing all of your lovely faces. And seeing all council members in person, the way the government's supposed to do business, but we sure appreciate being able to do this and all our staff who've made this possible and our council as well with, and so thanks for reading for their patience. This meeting must comply with the executive order and 29-20 and all other provisions of state law. And we hope everybody is home and, and safe and healthy. And we hear from all of you that are getting vaccinated. We're very happy and we know there's lots more, but thanks to those of you who let us know. So we appreciate that. And the city clerk will announce the public comment process.
This is City Clerk Kelly. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments for any item on the agenda now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. As no breaks will occur between agenda items, please note in the subject line, the item on the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like your comment read aloud or just to be entered into the record. Written comments to be read by the city clerk or staff is up for up to three minutes. Public comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. For providing oral comments during this meeting, join Zoom via desktop computer, cell phone app or telephone. The meeting details are located on the first page of the agenda. Members of the public will not be shown on video. You will be able to speak when called upon. When it is the appropriate time, use the raise hand feature on the desktop phone app or press star nine on your telephone. Public comments will be limited to three minutes so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Kelly. And now, Councilmember Nahathir Laba Gonzalez, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And City Clerk Kelly, can you please take the role?
Yes, Councilmember Agiri.
Agiri, here.
Councilmember Laba Gonzalez.
Laba Gonzalez, here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Fisher, here.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs.
Spriggs, here.
And Mayor DeDina.
DeDina, here. Thank you so much. And now we will invite council members to speak in the order as typically seated on the dais, starting with Councilmember Agiri. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and happy Black History Month. I attended the MTS Board of Directors meeting on January 21st, where we approved all the recommended appointees to all the different MTS subcommittees that we have. We also received an update on our forthcoming pronto fare collection system. This is an entirely digital platform that we will be transitioning to that has a lot of advantages for our writers here in Imperial Beach. For example, it will cap, basically make the best fare on a monthly basis. So instead of buying a whole monthly pass, if you don't need it, it will automatically figure out what fare is best for you. People will also be able to manage several different cards with one single account, meaning, for example, if you, if there's a household where you have children or kids that need to ride public transit, they can all be managed from a single account or single debit card. So that's really great. We also discuss, discuss the funding mechanisms for this transition, right? There will be a funding gap. So MTS staff did community outreach. They hosted three virtual meetings. And the general feedback was that they did not want fares to increase in prices. So we're going to be looking over the next few months at all the different sources of potential funding that we could offset the costs of this transition. Then on January 22nd, I attended the Sandag Board of Directors meeting. There was quite a number of topics and issues that were discussed. I'm sure the mayor will update you all on that. But what I did want to share with you is an update on one of Sandag's priority projects, which is the Midcoast Trolley Project. It is the largest infrastructure project that in the history of San Diego was region. But what's most relevant for our IB writers is that people will be able to ride one, one seat, one ride from the border all the way to university area. So that's huge when it comes to access to job hubs and things like that. It's 80% completed. It is expected to be finished by late, later this year, late 2021. And in addition to all these great and exciting regional projects that we have here, the great news is that at the federal level, we have a truly, what, what, an ally in public transit with the appointment of Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg. He is the first LGBT appointed cabinet member of President Biden. And I think he's going to be, bring a really unique perspective in transit equity and how public transit and partnering and engaging small cities will be key in the fight against climate change. Then on January 26th, along with all of you, I was able to participate in the interview process of the Designer Review Board and Thailand's Advisory Committee interviews. You know, we'll talk about that later in the agenda, but I was just overall very impressed with the level of candidates that interviewed for the, for the positions. And it was really great to hear firsthand a lot of our residents' perspectives. Now, lastly, I have a couple of announcements. February 13th, there's going to be a second food drive, a South Bay Second Food Drive for, available for all of IB residents. This is a partnership with local ironworkers 229, Murphy's Produce, Assembly Member Laura Nego Gonzalez and Councilwoman Moreno. It's going to take place at Southwest High School, February 13th, first come, first served basis. It will be completely contactless, contactless, and it'll start at 9:00 AM. And then I also want to share with you an update on the eviction moratorium that we have. We have extended our eviction moratorium here in Imperial Beach that has been done through the state. Residents cannot be evicted for inability to pay all or part of their rent that is due to COVID-related hardships. And then tenants are still responsible for paying unpaid amount of property, amount to property owners, but unpaid amounts cannot be the basis for eviction. There's also a state, state rental assistance program, $2.6 billion in funding will go to this program. And rental assistance extended to small property owners who agree to waive 20% of unpaid rent. Now, any help that residents need, they'll be able to acquire it through our new housing specialist, Tony Rolfe. He can be reached at 619-423-8303. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Councilmember Spriggs. I'm sorry, I'm back that up. Councilmember Fisher?
Good evening, everybody. Well, over the last couple of weeks, Councilman Laba, Laba Gonzalez and I have had the opportunity to attend the Cal City's New Orientation for Councilmembers and Mayors. And so it's been a great event, a lot of information to understand and to go through. Met a few people, realized that most cities throughout the state have the same type of issues that we do. Maybe just a little bit different to the left or the right or up or down, but generally the same and some good solutions. And again, just a great network of people to, to have met and to reach out to virtually. I hear that the, the conference is much better in person. And so I'm hoping at some point to get to the conference in person and rub elbows with some of my, my new member friends and council people as well. Other than that, just working with some local businesses to do some updated parking issues and structures to make it a little bit more accessible into their businesses. So that's about it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Laba Gonzalez?
Yes, like Councilman Fisher said, we attended the Cal City's training. And it was very informative. I, I really am looking forward to being able to experience something like that in person because our inability to network through Zoom really is, is kind of trying during these times. Also, I'd like to add that this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, District 4 Community Wide Cleanup. The locations where 40-yard dumpsters will be located, 15th and Fern, 10th and Grove, and 13th and IB Boulevard in Lumbre parking lot. In addition, I'd like to thank Mayor DeDina for letting me be involved in the interview process for the Design Review Board and the Thailand's Advisory Committee. Unbelievable, the individuals that applied and submitted their resumes and very impressive. It empowers me to see so many individuals from our community that want to partake and be involved. And the, the diversity of the individuals that applied is a perfect reflection of our community here in Imperial Beach. And that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a longstanding representative of the city to the League of California Cities, I'm really, really delighted that our two new council members were able to attend the League's new council member and new mayor orientation sessions. And I share your, your pain that it wasn't in person because some of the best features of these league gatherings, whether it's a conference or workshops or, or the, the training session you guys went to, is the face-to-face opportunity to meet other, other members and and, and to network. So I, I look forward to that day again. I don't know whether they held it or not, but one of the things that was really great in person was a simulated city council meeting. And I remember that from quite a few years ago. I spent 10 years on the council now. The, it was all about how to do everything wrong. And council members fighting amongst each other, the city attorney, you know, doing kind of wacko things, saying things at the wrong time, the mayor. Everything was, they were just, they, they taught the rules by breaking the rules. And, and then there was discussion afterwards and it was absolutely hilarious. And if you all weren't able to see that, it would be worth attending when we can do them in person again, just, just for that session. Of course, Imperial Beach is a prime example of how to do everything right. We've been, I think we've been a model city council for many years. Okay, having said all that, I attended on Friday, the 22nd, the, the coastal cities, coastal counties, Coastal Commission Working Group on Sea Level Rise. It was our first meeting of the year since the December workshop with the Coastal Commission. And I think we're going to be off to a good start of identifying some best practices that can be adopted by the coastal cities and the Coastal Commission. A lot of changes need to be made by the Coastal Commission. If they are going to be able to achieve their own goals of having every city, coastal city and coastal county have an up-to-date local coastal program, they are their own biggest problem as far as achieving that goal. And I think they're gradually beginning to realize that through these sessions. On the 28th, which was last Thursday, the league had a, an interactive Zoom meeting with the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. It was a briefing on the COVID legislation, CARES Act and how this administration plans to implement it and particularly getting resources to cities. They were not very specific, but it was clear that they're working hard toward that goal. On Saturday, the 30th, I had my first COVID vaccine, a Pfizer vaccine. And I can say to everybody in the audience, particularly people of color who are often resistant to getting these vaccinations, that it, I had no significant side effects from the vaccination. And I really encourage everyone, particularly people with vulnerable conditions and people over 65. And I'm in both categories, to, to get vaccinated as soon as possible. On coming up, there's no JPA meeting. It was canceled for this Thursday, Metro JPA. On Monday, the 8th, the San Diego Division of the League of California Cities is going to have its regular virtual meeting. Normally those are in person. And on Friday, the 11th and 12th, the League of California Cities Board of Directors, on which I sit, is going to have their quarterly meeting. So with that, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs. And I appreciate your leadership. We value your leadership on the vaccination issue, especially among the African-American community. And I think I saw your name on an email from the Chancellor of UCSD. Was that yesterday or today? I can't hear, can't hear you.
I'm not sure that I saw that email, Mr. Mayor. I hope it was positive.
It was. Let me, let me find that. Okay. I thought I, I thought you'd mentioned it. Anyway, let me, let me go back and look at that. Anyway, I thought it was about the vaccine stuff. Anyway, we'll move on. But again, that the vaccine, the vaccination issue is important. And that was the subject of the South County Economic Development Council meeting just this week with updates from the county and Mayor Salas and Supervisor Nora Vargas on where the vaccination updates going. National City and Chula Vista have opened up their own sort of like super centers, not even super centers, but centers. More needs to be done. Coronado has a center, IB has a center. And we all understand that IB, the city of Imperial Beach does not control vaccinations. We would like to. We did offer to the county from the very beginning that we would manage the entire process. We had a public-private partnership set up. We had the gym ready to go at Mar Vista. But the, the wheels of bureaucracy are turning. And we all know this, the bureaucracy, the vaccine rollout initially will go, go out as one of the most egregious examples of mismanagement and government incompetence, probably in the history of this country. And it's slowly getting better, but it's clear that we need to expand the range of partnerships. It looks like UCSD is getting a lot more, UCSD obviously is more engaged, Sharp Healthcare is more engaged, Kaiser's more engaged. And so we just need to, to get more centers and more areas for people to get vaccinated. So, but we're very glad that you got vaccinated. And I do hear from our residents who are frustrated and also those who got vaccinated. The two most important sites in IB for vaccinations, the folks most at risk were the Sonnacy Manor and then the St. James Plaza Senior Living Facility. And I am happy to report that thanks to our city's pressure, the county did vaccinate the first round of vaccinations for St. James Plaza on Monday. And I heard from the residents, they're very, very, very happy about that. So that's, that's really good. And they were the most at risk because of the way, you know, just lots of folks over a certain age, our most senior members of our community living in, you know, in a, in a high-rise building. So that's great. And then we got, we were able to pressure to make sure that, um, Sonnacy Manor were vaccinated very early on. So that's good news. As obviously in our firefighters and our first responders, lifeguards were vaccinated. I'm concerned, I think there's been a delay in getting our sheriffs and police officers vaccinated. That's become kind of a contentious issue. I'm just going to flat out say that our public safety offers, officers should be prioritized for, for vaccination. That is very clear. Those guys have been on the, I'm sorry. Our fellow deputies and peace officers have been on the, on the front lines of this pandemic and have suffered greatly. They're always, you know, dealing with the public and at, at risk. So I definitely will be reaching out to our county supervisors to let us, let them know that at least in my, from my opinion, our sheriffs, our county sheriffs need to get vaccinated. And it shouldn't be zero sum. It shouldn't be that some people get vaccinated and others don't. We should figure out how to make sure that they're our most vulnerable. And then our first responders and public safety folks that are right in the front lines get access to, to vaccines. Sandag, the most recent meeting, we had an issue of sort of an, a sort of equity policy. And that, that just, it's a fancy word for saying that the Sandag is really going to make a commitment to doing more to work with underserved and underprivileged areas, communities of color, areas like Imperial Beach that have historically been ignored. That started a little bit back for us a few years ago when I noticed that Imperial Beach was not competitive for grants because you needed match, you needed cash in the bank, then as sort of match. So it meant that cities like Carlsbad that are incredibly wealthy and have budgets much more greater than Imperial Beach were getting prioritized for, for programs. And Imperial Beach, which didn't have any cash in the bank, but had a capacity to do the project, weren't getting prioritized and they're actually not even getting the funds. They made a big stink about that. That policy changed and all of a sudden, we started getting grants from Sandag. So that's good news. But we need to continue that to make sure that the folks that have been most ignored and most forgotten and have the greatest need in terms of public infrastructure and transportation dollars get focused on. And obviously that's in, in South San Diego County. And then at the Borders Committee, we did hear, we have some new members. And then we did hear from a number of things, but from the North American Development Bank, and they're a big partner of ours. And I know Councilmember Agiri has helped us get money for them that would go into sewage infrastructure. So that, that's good. And then we'll have more discussion from, on that, on that item, on the sewage item later. And then finally, we did meet with, virtually with Assemblymember Chris Ward. Chris was a San Diego City Councilmember. We've known Chris for a long time and now representing the district, our district. And we really just highlighted three things that all require money. Number one, we said flat out, we need to help the state, help us get affordable housing money. We have two projects ready to go that we cannot get funding for. And there's, again, there's a number of criterias that are used to, to allocate funds, one of which is your EnviroScreen ranking, which means, are you impacted by pollution? It turns out that the bureaucrats and technicians in, in Sacramento, we do a lot of things wrong in the state and never seem to own up to it. Listed Imperial Beach is a, is a pollution, pretty much a pollution-free zone. So we're ranked lower on these, in these grants for housing than other sites. So what, we will be discussing that a little later. It's shocking. Doesn't reflect the current state of the science and the impacts that we're receiving, our quality impacts from sewage. And then we asked for money for our senior center. We're doing a, putting in a grant, a new grant application. We didn't get the first one precisely because of this EnviroScreen issue and other things that don't, don't seem to make any sense. And have him, have him and his staff help us. And then number three, obviously to continue doing things, actually it was really more about beach stuff, beach safety and I really get Sacramento to start putting money into doing natural climate solutions and things to help shore up beaches in, against beach erosion, you know, sand replenishment, et cetera. And make sure that cities aren't sued for, for doing the right thing. So with that, I think that's it. And we will move to City Manager Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. This is City Manager Hall. At your last meeting, which was held on January 20th, the city council asked us to contact the Sweetwater Union High School District to get an update on the swimming pool. Wanted to let you know that I had an opportunity to speak with the interim superintendent, Dr. Agiri. And he let me know that the parts that are necessary to complete the improvements or the repairs on the pool so that it can be used in the immediate future are on back order and it would probably take several weeks, probably two to three months in order to get those parts. They're planning to start construction on the new pool in the summer, in the, either the early, early summer. And so they felt like about the time they got the pool repaired, they would like to start construction on the new pool. So at the current time, the district is looking at, rather than trying to open the existing pool to gear up and get started on the construction of the new pool at Mar Vista High School. He also wanted me to point out that Mar Vista High School is the only high school in the district that has its own swimming pool. So they already have arrangements with some other pools in the area in Chula Vista, National City and other locations where students will be given access to the pool and they will be working out some of those details. So just wanted to make sure that the staff followed back around and reported that to the city council. So you were aware of the current policy of the Sweetwater Union High School District. If the city council would like me to ask any other questions of Dr. Agiri, just let me know and I will get ahold of him and report back. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Hall. And just to update our new council members, Bob, former council member, Patton and I did meet with Dr. Agiri and then trustee Paula Hall to discuss this issue along with Andy Hall more than a few months ago. I think maybe in, in the fall, October or November, I'm not really, I think it was October. And, and the same issues came up, but we did reach out to the city of San Diego. We did reach out to the city of Coronado to make sure that our kids could have full-time. We reached out to the city of Natural City and the city of Chula Vista. So we have been working a lot to try to make sure that our kids have access to full-time. And it's also because of the lobbying of the city of Imperial Beach that we were able to get millions of dollars for that new pool. So it's an unfortunate situation. I think anybody grew up in IB and used that pool knows that it's constantly breaking down. So anyway, with that, do we have any public comments, City Clerk Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, I will begin with members of the public participating via Zoom. Members of the public, if you are interested in speaking, please raise your hand. Okay, we have one raised hand and it's Eric Cyrusson. Mr. Cyrusson, you have three minutes. Please begin. Unmute yourself and begin.
Yes, my name is Eric Cyrusson, Imperial Beach native, current resident of unincorporated San Diego County. And I'll just take a few seconds of your time. Thank you all for letting me speak in front of you today. I just have to say, Mayor DeDina, I'm incredibly impressed with your COVID response as it pertains, especially to the retirement homes of the city. I wish people much higher up than you had built fortresses around all of those places in America. And we all would have been much better off. I also applaud you for prodding the county into vaccinating our sheriffs and law enforcement. I believe in 2020, there were three sheriff's calls to neighborhood center alone after food distributions involving the same homeless individual. I helped Jose and John pick up all the stuff after two of them. But I mean, they are absolutely on the front line and they are a lot of times dealing with individuals who may never get vaccinated and follow no protocol. So I just have to say, Sir Mayor, I really appreciate you defending the old and defending those who protect us. And most of my comments will come in the pollution section later, but thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Okay, Mr. Mayor, there are no other oral comments and I have no written comments.
Thank you very much. And now, hold on. So the public comment period now is, is closed. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items number one through two. Is there a motion? For a second?
Second by Fisher.
Great. Thank you so much.
This is City Clerk Kelly. I will now take an oral roll call vote. There has been a motion by, by Spriggs, second by Fisher, to approve consent calendar item numbers one and two. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote? Councilmember Laba Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Laba Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. And now we have report item number one, report number one, discussion of commissions and appointments to vacancies. And I will, we, we had, first of all, we, when I was elected, the first time, we completely changed the way that we, the city of Imperial Beach carried out the selection for, for people on city boards and commissions. And that process before I came into office was managed just solely by the mayor of Imperial Beach. And now we have a process in which each, each and every council member together carries out interviews with applicants. The, every council member's asked a question, the same question. All applicants get the same questions. So everything's fair. They submit applications and their resumes. And it's a chance really for the council just to, to meet and actually talk to Stephen through a beach residents who are very interested in becoming involved with the city. So it's always a, a really delightful and educational, inspiring, for me at least, process. So with that, for the design review board, for, we have three candidates with terms expiring December 30th. for we have three candidates with terms expiring December 31st, 2024. Those are Miguel Beltran, Chelsea Grace and Lance Rogers. And then for the Thailand's Advisory Committee with terms expiring in December 31st, 2024, Joe Ellis and Tiffany Levon. And then Thailand's Advisory Committee with the term expiring on December 31st, 2022, John Keating. And City Clerk Kelly, do you have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no written comments. Members of the public, if you'd like to raise your hand and speak on this item, please do so at this time. And Mr. Mayor, there are no raised hands either.
Great. And so now the public comment period is now closed. And first I also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the applicants, all the folks who did apply, put their names in the hat and go through the interview process with the council and as well as thank my fellow city council colleagues for their participation. And then and then the decisions are basically, the candidates are ranked or scored. There's a score sheet as well as obviously people in the resumes. And generally, I would argue that the count, pretty much folks score people pretty similarly. And what you tend to see are the candidates with the highest level of professional experience or city count, you know, city experience in those particular subject areas. And with academic training tend to be the ones that get the highest scores and get selected. So we have some very, very, very high level and qualified professionals for both committees. So anyway, that we can start with city council discussion if there is any with councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you just go through the list again? I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch all the names that you are recommending we approve.
Miguel Beltran, Chelsea Grace, Lance Rogers for design review. And then Joe Ellis, Tiffany Levon and John Keating for Titan's Advisory.
Wonderful. Thank you. No, I just want to reiterate my gratitude for being able to participate in the process. And again, as you mentioned, the the pool of qualified candidates was very impressive. And, you know, I will be supporting this motion for appointment. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, any questions or comments?
I'd just like to reiterate my appreciation for being involved with the selection, with the interview process. All the applicants were very qualified and very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
You know, I just want to say, wow, 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 wow. What an amazing amount of residents in the city who want to participate and be part of the moving forward. So again, thanks again for all those who took the time, the effort to fill out the application to meet with the city council and the mayor. And congratulations to those who've been appointed. Look forward to working with those who who have made the appointment. And it's great, great stuff. And again, thanks, Mayor, for having us help you with the decisions.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate what everyone else has said and it's obvious that we're unanimous in in thinking that we had a really well qualified group of applicants for these boards and commission vacancies. I really am grateful for community members stepping up and wanting to participate. A number of the of the candidates are people who are really very new to Imperial Beach and come from active backgrounds in other communities in California. And really want to be part of this community, really want to be take hold of of how things are going and and participate and provide their expertise. And I think that is a very admirable thing and that we should all appreciate. Mr. Mayor, I think that that kind of leads me to two thoughts. One is just as we had alternates and ultimately expanded the Park and Recreation Committee because we had a number of interested people. And that committee has a very critical role. I think in light of what's going on with our environment, cross border pollution, sea level rise, et cetera, that our Thailand's Advisory Committee, on which I served for a number of years, including two or three years as chair, probably could play a bigger role in advising the council, looking into things in more depth with the expertise that's on that committee than we can. And we we need all the all hands on deck with with these complicated issues. So I would think at some point we should consider expanding the numbers on that committee, given that we had more qualified people than we had seats for. And secondly, that we consider asking or tasking them with with more advisory assignments on the different issues that are affecting us to get their viewpoints and their involvement. These folks shouldn't be idle and have half of their meetings canceled because there's no agenda items for them to work on. We should be making sure that they are fully engaged and able to provide the feedback and expertise that we need. So those are things I hope we can take up at another point in time. We've got a lot in front of us as far as these existential issues. And we've got a lot of interested members of the public who want to serve and and help our, help us out. So I think we need to find ways to to let them at it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Excellent points. And thanks, everybody. I really appreciate it. Again, it was, it's just nice to have to hang out and and meet with residents, but also have time to as a council together also working on this. It's it's really nice. And I think we all commented, it's be a lot better to do it in person. But the Zoom format, you know, allowed us to to make this happen. Just to comment on the applicants rather than going, without going to detail about personal, you know, personal lives. It's my understanding about half the candidates, I mean, half of the six that are being appointed tonight, grew up in Imperial Beach. You know, there are our city stars. They want, they grew up in Imperial Beach, went out and got advanced degrees and became experts in their field. And I know one person, you know, at least second generation Ivy resident, another long decades and decades, decades long national expert in his field. And I'll just mention that's Joe Ellis. Arguably, we we have a national expert on beach erosion and coastal management. No one does the work that he does better anywhere than Joe Ellis. And, you know, he's, I've known Joe since I was a kid and really involved. And then the other half were newer residents, which I think we all appreciated. We had one resident that worked with the port for more than, worked in partnership with the port for more than 20 years. So people with outstanding backgrounds. Tiffany Levon, who grew up in Imperial Beach and his family's from here, worked with the city of San Diego on permit applications and doing permitting for complicated coastal projects, works with all the agencies that our our city does. And so, yeah, just extraordinary background for some of our members. Anyway, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appointments as presented. Thanks so much. Second?
Fisher, second.
Great. Thank you so much. And City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by, excuse me, second by Fisher to approve the mayor's appointments as presented. Councilmember Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor Dina, how do you vote?
Dina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much. And now we have item number two, and that's report on the Imperial Beach Storm Water Management Program. Environmental Program Specialist Two Ariano will give the report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff and all audience. My name is Uvaldo Ariano and I am the Environmental Program Specialist for the city. And I'm going to present a brief description of what the Environmental Division handles for for the city. And next slide, please. Okay, the Environmental Division is also in charge of the, is in charge of the storm water, also solid waste and recycling and conservation for the city. Today I will be focusing my presentation mainly on storm water topics. The city of Imperial Beach is located within two different watersheds, which is the San Diego Bay and Tijuana River watershed. Actually, Imperial Beach is the lead agency representing both watersheds and being in charge of the contract management to be able to report to the San Diego Regional Water Board. The city spends between 1.5 and 1.9 million dollars every fiscal year that covers submittals, for example, the annual water quality improvement plan, which is, we just submitted, actually, it was last week. And also it covers everything, all submittals that we have to the regional board, monitoring efforts, maintenance, consulting services, et cetera. Next slide, please. The storm water management is divided into different components, which it makes it more specific when it comes to program management. The following list contains the main components of the storm water management program with the city of Imperial Beach. Next slide, please. Okay, so we have existing development. We call existing development to all the storm drain lines and channels that the city maintains and all the best management practices, which is pretty much like all the catch basins that we have, trash capture devices, filters, curb guards that you see on the on the street, which are pretty much to, you know, stop any trash or something from going into the storm drain lines. And they end up in the, their San Diego Bay or the Tijuana River, the Tijuana estuary. So the the sewer division actually provides maintenance to all the existing development in the city. We cover 100% of the storm drain lines each year. All the areas are inspected during the year and also residents report their concerns to the Environmental Division. And here's, you know, something that the residents can do. They, it's always easy for us to, if the residents report, because they are, they have more eyes on the, you know, the street. They each can report to us. So if they are involved in this process, it helps us to identify any any problems that that we have, like either like over irrigation or some other issues. And even like sewer spills, actually, we we take care of those too. We help, we we handle the information and we submit it to the state in case that something happens. There are some areas that are high risk of flash flooding in the in the city. And all public work staff prioritize these areas and the maintenance during a rain event. Next slide, please. Also, we have development planning. The Environmental Division works very, very closely with the Community Development Department to ensure that all rules and regulations are followed. The information is always available to contractors working in the city. We have information on our website and the Community Development Department. They actually provide information for every applicant in the city. If they want to, there are some certain rules that they have to follow for the storm water. And the Environmental Division also takes care of monitoring in all the areas in the city with an effort to avoid any pollutants from going into the receiving waters, which include the Tijuana estuary, the Pacific Ocean, Otay River and San Diego Bay. Next slide, please. In addition to the components previously discussed, there is an illicit connection illegal discharge program, also known as ICID by the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board. And this is pretty much like everything that that we find, everything it gets reported at the end of the year in our germ annual report, which is the jurisdictional runoff management program report. And these are numbers that we have and we submit to the regional board. And it goes from everything that that we see on the street, you know, over irrigation. If there's a construction site that doesn't have any BMPs and many, many other cases that we have in the city, oil spills, you know, we we take care of those if people report those. You know, it's easier for us to to keep an eye on those and keep all the streets clean. And all the public works staff is trained to detect and any legal discharges like over irrigation being the most common one. And the Environmental Division works closely with code enforcement also to handle violations to our Imperial Beach municipal code. Education and outreach are very important as residents. And visitors can make a big difference in the water quality in our beach and local waterways. The Environmental Division has an agreement with a nonprofit organization to provide presentations to to schools and city events. The city also participates in the regional efforts with all the cities and the county, in the county of San Diego. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, the Environmental Division is also in charge of the solid waste and recycling for the city. Edco provides the trash and recycling services for the city of Imperial Beach. And the Imperial Beach is scheduled to begin residential organics collection on April 1st, 2021, in an effort to comply with the state Cal recycle requirements. The street sweeper is a complimentary program that the city offers where we still ask for all the residents to try to keep the sidewalk free of any debris or trash. That can help us a lot, you know, don't leave everything to the street sweeper. You know, the more that residents can help us, you know, the better for for the city. And we do have an upcoming cleanup event as Councilmember Labor Gonzalez mentioned. And it's Saturday, February 6th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And it is organized by Councilmember Labor Gonzalez and Edco. And city staff will be providing support. So all the event runs really, really smoothly and without any complications. And just a reminder, these are for Ivy residents only. We are not going to be accepting any tires, green waste, hazardous waste or construction demolition. And there's going to be three dumpster locations available. It's on 15th and Farm, is the northwest corner of 15th and Farm, 10th and Grove, which is in front of Onion to school, 1133 13th Street parking lot. So those are the three locations that we're going to be having. If you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate to go to the imperialbeachca.gov/environmental. And you can find information there to contact us. And I'll be happy to respond to any questions that you have. And this is what is part of what Environmental Division does for the city. And I'm open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. City Clerk Kelly, are there any public comments?
We, yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one raised hand from Eric Cyrrerson. Mr. Cyrrerson, please unmute yourself and begin. You have three minutes. Mr. Cyrrerson? Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I apologize.
That's okay.
My name is Eric Cyrrerson, Imperial Beach native, current resident of unincorporated San Diego County. I applaud the city and Minister Ariano and their storm drain efforts. I hate trash. I hate trashing gutters because I know like Mayor Dina and everyone else where it ends up. I would say one of the biggest things we can tell the public simply is to go out in front of their own homes and sweep their own gutters along the curb. And if they have an elderly neighbor, a disabled neighbor or someone who doesn't have a broom, perhaps sweep their neighbors as well. And that would help tremendously. In terms of the storm drain issue in the city of Imperial Beach, this drives me nuts. I've had discussions with Mr. Gibson from the San Diego Regional Quality Board. This is a one way street in their eyes. It is simply our responsibility to keep our water clean going out. However, Mr. Hall, Mr. Helmer, the city council and anyone else who has heard me since 2019, which is two years now, storm drain sections IE and T, I believe, I don't have my notes in front of me, are absolutely inundated twice a day. And right now that water's poisoned, absolutely poisoned. Took my nieces and nephews down there two days ago and the first thing they said to me was Uncle, it smells. And the fact that the storm drains are not a one way street in Seaside Point, the lowest neighborhood of Imperial Beach, that they are a two way street and that on high tides they fill up with what is currently because of the configuration of the estuary, the southern orientation of the river mouth, the northern orientation of the Onion and Tijuana flow. On massive high tides, nothing but sewage is pushed into those storm drains. I wish there was some waiver from any permit we need from Mr. Gibson for anything, just for that fact alone. Beyond that, Mr. Hall and Mr. Helmer are completely aware that I believe that Beyond that, Mr. Hall and Mr. Helmer are completely aware that I believe that that estuary is a dangerous situation. Right up against that neighborhood, the way it is, it fills up with way, way too much water on that eastern side and it is gonna flood and it is gonna be really bad someday. Beyond that, I applaud Mr. Ariano and his efforts and the environmental people and their efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seiverson. Any additional uh public comment, City Clerk Kelly?
Um, are there any other public uh members wanting to speak on this item? No, Mr. Mayor, that is it.
Great, thank you so much. And now we, uh, this public comment period is now closed and we can begin uh city council discussion, we'll go in reverse order this time. Mayor Protem Spriggs, any comments?
Yes, uh, thank you very much for the report. Uh, I think this may be one of your first such comprehensive reports and uh. Uh, I, I thought it was excellent. The um, the question that I have, uh, Mr. Ariano, is um. The uh has to do with the new recycling program that you mentioned is gonna start in April. Could you elaborate a little bit on what that is about and what kind of material? And when do we get the receptacles and uh just, just elaborate a little bit on what, as far as you know anyway. What that's going to be all about for the city of Imperial Beach?
Absolutely, um. Yes, uh, there's gonna be, you know, now instead of having, you know, the two uh. Receptacles that we all have, you know, like is the uh trash and recycling additionally, we're gonna have a green waste. But the state is requiring all the cities with the AV Assembly Bill eighteen twenty-six. To collect organics, so the rollout uh from uh Edco, they're gonna be providing. These new um, um. Trash container, let's, let's call it like that, is gonna be for green waste. So they're gonna start on April first, so they're gonna be uh the rollout, they're gonna start collecting those, they. And from there, uh, they're, they're gonna take it from there, so it's gonna be a transfer to their station and processed. And that's what the state Cal recycle uh wants us to, cities to do, and that's what we're doing on that.
Um, thanks. Uh, are they going to be using that green waste for. Composting or what's, what's your understanding as to what is supposed to happen with it?
Yes, they're gonna be uh, you know, um, pretty much composting all of these, they're, Edco, they have a facility. Uh, that's gonna be running in Escondido and they're gonna be collecting this. And uh pretty much extracting all the, you know, the good things from, from the, from the green waste and, and collecting these and. And actually do like natural ga- gas and all of that. And, and yeah, so this is a good process that Edco are gonna be doing and. And it's gonna be go- going pretty much like in the whole county. All cities are participating in this and Edco has the service provider for the city. They're gonna start with us in April first.
I think now you're, you're, you're stimulating my um, my recollection that uh Edco made a presentation once. That included a new uh pretty sophisticated facility and I think they did say it's in Escondido for process, for processing this material. You know, it might be a good thing, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, if we're trying to, and, and especially a city manager. If we wanted to get uh Imperial Beach to be the model that it uh usually is and everything. Uh, we may uh want to have some uh Edco do another presentation, either at a city council meeting or some other. Sites around the city or whatever as to why this is important, where this is, material is gonna go and what it's going to. How they're gonna process it, et cetera. Uh, just, just a thought because otherwise, you know, we'll be getting these new containers and uh some written instructions and nobody's gonna really. Know what to do with it. I'm, I'm sure that the city has some thoughts about uh how this is gonna roll out and so does Edco.
Good, good point, Councilmember Spriggs. I know we had that presentation while, last year, so we'll go ahead and do that again. Um, and now we go to, since I messed up the order last time, Councilmember Leva Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate the great um presentation, um. City Manager Hall was mentioning to me today how excited he was about the cleanup uh this Saturday, so we're looking forward to. Getting all that debris and everything that's been on public property in District Four off the streets and into trash receptacles, so uh thank you again.
And now Councilmember uh Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I just had a quick question, you did mention uh in your presentation. About the residents being kinda eyes and ears, is there a process that residents can uh make reports and if there is, could you uh explain it to me?
Yes, they're usually, what they do is they can call the Public Works Office, which is at six one nine four two, two, three, eight, three, one, one, six, one, nine, four, two, three, eight, three, one, one. Usually, uh, you know, the, some residents are really, really dedicated in being, you know, or eyes out there. They go in person, obviously right now because of the pandemic restrictions that we have that the office is, is closed. But, but usually they report it by, you know, your, your phone number, Public Works or the Environmental Division, which is six, one, nine, four, two, four, four, zero, nine, five. And they can report like anything, you know, that they are concerned about and we're always happy to assist them. You know, also with contractors, if they have any questions or something, we rather, you know, provide them with the information they need before they start their projects. Rather than just go there and find out that they are, they don't have any uh best management practices and. They have an illegal discharge going on or something, we're always there to help. They can also uh contact me at W. Arayano at imperialbeachca.gov and I'll be happy to assist them with any questions that they have.
Wonderful, thank you. You know, I think that uh the, the citywide. Uh, focus on keeping clean cities, streets and neighborhoods is huge and I think that that's gonna. Uh, lend ourselves to be, just be a, a much safer community, so thanks for all you do and thanks, thanks to the uh, the staff over there as well.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Fisher. And now uh, Councilmember Rigori.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ariano, for the great presentation. I don't know if you knew this, I did my master's capstone research project on biofilters and BMPs. And I was also the former community representative for the first WQIP um advisory committee, so I know the sheer amount of work that goes into these germ. And WQIP reports. And now with the uh new state mandate relating to organic waste, I know that you and your team have your hands full, so. Just wanna commend you on your strong work and um my hope is that we see you more frequently on council, so thank you very much for all of your work.
Thanks, everybody, and uh, yeah, gr- great job and, you know, I was gonna mention this stormwater retention basins or biofiltration basins, Councilwoman Rigori. Um, and uh, and you know, those made a big difference on reducing stormwater flows and I think these integrated new projects and infrastructure we do. That includes that, uh, those are really important. Um, and then it's just important to recognize that, you know, our guys, our team does a great job. Um, our city is really a leader, a national leader in reducing stormwater and keeping our streets clean and protecting our waterways. But all that work is eclipsed because of the, you know, the sewage from Mexico, doesn't mean that we, we shouldn't do it. But the injustice of making our city spend huge volumes of money, tons of mu-. Tons, tons and tons of money, piles of money to protect uh the waterways when. Uh, the Mexican government can egregiously just dump toxic waste and sewage into the same waterways. Is not lost on anybody, including our own staff members, uh, and our residents, of course, the city council, so. That's why we're working so hard to make sure that we clean that up, so, you know, when our city does an exemplary job, then it's not. Fouled by what comes out into the Tijuana River. On the other hand, it is really important that when we talk about this issue, that we have a, we have a hundred percent ownership on saying. We do everything impeccably and perfectly in Imperial Beach, we set the highest standards and it maintain the highest standards. So that no one can say, hey, you guys are, you know, not following the rules and, you know, you're hypocrites, so we walk the walk, talk the talk. Um, and keep our environment clean so we can uh. Be an example for those south of the border who really um aren't doing what they should be doing, so anyway with that, um. There's no action required and I know Ms. uh Councilmember Spriggs, Mayor Protem Spriggs. We definitely noted the, the um idea of having an additional uh. Public hearing or public discussion of the, the new recycling program, so uh composting program role will um schedule that as well. With that, we now have um. Item number three, discussion on Tijuana River pollution. And Environmental and Natural Resources Director Helmer will give the report and I wanna thank Chris, I just, Mr. Helmer. Uh, you know, there's a lot of amazingly complicated technical information that has, um, that has to be addressed when you're dealing with the Tijuana River. Uh, and it's clear that uh, Mr. Helmer is the leader, along with Dave Gibson, on the technical front side and. Um, folks who can really dominate, not dominate, but um really sort of help manage and guide the process and are the go-to people to figure out actually. The specific actionable items that need to be uh carried out to reduce uh the trash, the toxic waste, the waste tires. And of course the sewage that is pouring across the border as we speak. So with that, Mr. Helmer, with that introduction, um, take it away.
Well, Mayor, thank you very much for the kind words. Um, next slide please. Uh, this is uh Natural Resources Director Chris Helmer and I'll be providing a brief update on. What's going on in Tijuana River and then really open up for discussions and I'm really here for discussions. What you see here? Um, this is a photo from Friday, right after the storm, Friday morning, I went out there and I captured some videos. Um, the storm we got on Friday entirely, you can go to the next slide, please. Um, the storm we got on Friday was actually one of the biggest storms we've had here in Imperial Beach and, gosh, in the last couple of years. Um, it, by terms of intensity of rain and, and volume of flow on the river, it measured up to be. A five-year storm event, you know, the, the storm that you'd expect to see every five years in the river valley. And with that, you know, you saw a lot of the debris, a lot of the trash, a lot of the sewage coming down um through the river valley. What you see over here is on, on your right is Canyon del Sol, that's one of the canyon collectors and then of course the, another shot of the main river channel. Um, I went out there as part of a separate project the city's working on and, and got. Video and, and really uh investigated each of the places where flow is coming across the border. Uh, next slide please. So of course there's a lot of efforts going on in the river valley, but probably the, the biggest effort and one that, that's getting most of the attention. Is the project with the EPA and the, the Environmental Protection Agency is currently doing a technical analysis. On a list of ten different projects and, and these are the projects they're trying to identify how they're gonna spend the three hundred million dollars of, of funds that we've secured. About a year and a half ago on improvements. In the river valley, so these are a whole list of ten projects, I'm not gonna go through each of these projects. Um, but I'm, I can definitely answer to any of them if you had any specific questions, but I am gonna highlight project number one because that, that is a project. That all the local agencies and the state of California is pushing really hard on. And, and what project number one and, and what we're looking forward to, to involve. Is some type of diversion system on the US side of the border. To capture dry weather flows and to capture some volume of wet weather flows and to stop the trash and debris that's coming across through. The main river channel and the side canyons. And, you know, so I, I looked back at the flow that came through the river with this last storm. I told you it was a five-year storm, it was a large rain event. Well, just after twenty-four hours, the flow on the river dropped down to a hundred million gallons a day. After forty-eight hours, the flow dropped down to eighty million gallons a day. And then today I look, I looked at the flow gauge and we're, we're still getting about fifty million gallons a day of contaminated water, mixed sewage. Um, I walked down the river mouth and it smells really bad. Uh, but those are all volumes of which we're looking to encompass under project one of being able to capture the flow, so after you have a rain event. You're able to stop the debris and then to some degree you're able to capture um flows to some extent, I mean, we're, we put in. Um, the, the biggest possible uh solution that we've been advocating for project one is a hundred and sixty-three million gallons a day. But of course, um, depending on, on where each of these projects uh fall into uh EPA analysis, we're looking to have something, so. I mean, it is solvable, it is to, it is possible to drastically reduce the amount of pollution coming across the border and, and that is what we're aiming to do and. So I'm gonna pause right there and just open it up for discussions if council wanted to go through any, any of these other projects or if you wanna talk about how we can really maintain. Momentum with our local, state and federal coalition to make sure that we, we really move forward the appropriate projects in the river valley. So I'll stop right there.
Great, thanks, Mr. Helmer. Um, do we have any public, City Clerk Kelly, do we have any public comments?
I'll begin with the members of the public participating via Zoom. Are there any members um participating that would like to speak on this item? Okay, there is one, Mr. Eric Seiverson. Please unmute yourself and begin, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Eric Seiverson, I am an Imperial Beach native, I am a current resident. Of unincorporated San Diego County. I apologize, I didn't know we were gonna actually talk about flow volumes, otherwise I'd have been slightly more prepared, I can tell you that. The peak volume of one seventy-five cubic meters per second isn't even the largest volume in the calendar year, January to January. In January twenty twenty, there was a peak volume of four hundred and sixty-eight. I believe in December of twenty nineteen, we got in the three seventy-eights, those are. Four sixty-eight would be near, over ten year, three eighteen is ten year. Uh, in twenty eighteen, we hit twenty, ten year. Twenty nineteen, we hit ten year, twenty twenty, we hit ten year and greater. Uh, that things, that twenty-five and them greater numbers are coming. I keep telling the world that, no one believes me. In terms of the actual projects. This latest flow, it was, the valley was primed, so it was running at three cubic meters per second when it started to rain. Uh, it went three to, it has a doubling action once it rains, um, to my eyes, I haven't figured out the math yet. But it went, so one six, one sixty-nine million gallons per day. I'll give you eight cubic meters per second if you want, it's probably really seven and they turn it off at six, most likely. Uh, it went three to. Seven to twenty to forty to one seventy-six, I think in two hours. Roughly, maybe it was four hours on the last rain. It surpassed. The entire capacity of anything planned in the first fifteen minutes of the rain, the second reading after the rain. The valley was primed, I'll give you that. Now in terms of post-rain, right now, three cubic meters per second, you block all that, I don't know where you put it, I don't know where you treat it, I don't know what you do. But certainly you can block that, I don't know if you can legally block it, uh, the Mexicans call it natural runoff, some environmentalists gonna argue with them and not with you. But I'm concerned, nobody will explain to me that this thing is absolutely turned off in a rainstorm, it just is. There's no other way to put it and until someone tells me other, I will oppose this to the hill. You guys need to clean the valley and you need to think of management. Thank you.
Okay, I believe there was another speaker, is it Vivian Marquez Waller? Okay, her hand isn't raised. Um, Mr. Mayor, I do have a written comment and I'll read that. It's from Mitchell D. McKay and he says. And he says, citizens for coastal conservancy ca- cannot support any proposed project. With indiscriminately increases the capacity and transportation of treated Mexican effluent into the local Pacific Ocean. Through the use of the existing South Bay Ocean Outfall. Currently in excess of twenty-five million gallons per day of Tijuana sewage and wastewater. Is injected just off the Imperial Beach coastline in about ninety feet of ocean water. One of the local NGO plans that is being proposed and backed by certain members of the city council. Will increase this dumping to the system's fully designed capacity of up to and over one hundred sixty million gallons per day. This type of solution is environmentally irresponsible. And not in the best interest of Imperial Beach's residents, families or visitors, not to mention the long-term damage to the ecosystem. Of the local ocean life. Citizens for Coastal Conservancy fully supports the wastewater reclamation on either side of the border and is requesting this current technology be included as part of any. Responsible solution. Respectfully, Mitchell D. McKay. And that is it for written comments. And then just one more time, are there any members of the public participating via Zoom that wanna speak? And Mr. Mayor, that is the final comment.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Helmer, just a, just a comment, or against your question, have, have you? Have you, have there any been, have there been documented any beach closure days as a result of the ocean outfall pipe since secondary treatment went in?
No, the uh, I mean, I, I think the city had a big issue with the the. Alphal plant, and this was before IBWC upgraded their plan to what they're supposed to be. This is secondary. And then since then, I mean, that clearly anything that's going out the outfall needs to be permitted and approved to US federal clean water standards. I, I think that's, that's the issue here is that if they are going to use the capacity of the outfall, it has to meet the clean water standards and 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 those are set pretty strictly.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just tack on a, a point related to what Mr. Helmer just said? The only other issue we have had, and I think it was. Prior to your term as mayor. I raised from the Metro Wastewater Commission standpoint, when the city was, the city of San Diego and the um. Participating agencies were first designing the Pure Water Project. And one of the early strategies, one of the early options was to um, reverse the. The, the South Bay Maine. And move more uh, and offload the Point Loma Water Treatment Plant by moving more wastewater. Into the uh, South Bay Water Treatment Plant. And then out, the treated to secondary and then out uh, the um, the outfall. And I objected to that, the city objected to that as well. Because that would have meant that we would be taking. The North County's wastewater essentially. Uh, and the rest of the county's wastewater and and putting it into. The South Bay in a shallower. Environment as the letter pointed out. Now, that's a lot different. Than. An alternative to the raw sewage that's going out. From into the Tijuana River and and other points, including Punta Banderas. In uh, in Mexico into the Pacific and polluting our. Our estuary and our beaches with raw sewage. Any secondary treatment. Is, is infinitely better. It secondary treatment that goes all the way out the outfall. Out to sea. Secondary treatment of that sewage is a much better alternative. Than just dumping it into the river valley and out into the ocean. So in my view. Yes, it would be better if it could be recycled, just like pure water is recycling for potable use here. If they can recycle it for. Purple pipe use or potable use in Mexico, that would be great. That should be a long term goal that we have. But in the meantime, if we can get it all treated up to secondary and out the out, outfall, that is infinitely better. Than the situation we have right now. So I just wanted to clarify the historical point in terms of and and the distinction between. That and the current situation.
Great, thank you. Um, we'll start with also member Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Helmer, for your presentation. Just have some clarifying questions uh, for the benefit of our, our viewers and residents. Just going back to the different options that we were talking about related to the International Wastewater Treatment Plant. Which was upgraded, thank you, thanks to Senator Feinstein back, I believe, in two thousand and eleven. There have been, um, my understanding, zero days out of compliance since that upgrade has taken place. Is that correct, Mr. Helmer?
I believe you're correct. I don't, I don't know the full details on it, but yeah, once you finally upgraded secondary, then IBWC met its. Its outfall requirements um, as set by the San Diego Water Board.
Great. So that means that through the South Bay Ocean Outfall, which is located not near the shoreline, but three miles offshore, which, by the way, is monitored on a monthly basis. And uh, on a multiple days per week uh, for water sampling basis. Has been in compliance with the Clean Water Act. Now, some of these proposed projects. That have yet to be implemented that we are supporting are US based. It is not. Uh, unknown that we require a watershed based solution that we need to work upstream. The caveat here is that we have absolutely no control over what our neighbors to the south, a completely sovereign nation in itself. Decide to do with their wastewater or not. What we can control is what is on our, our side. So some of these projects that are being proposed. Would in fact capture some of these low and medium sized flows, divert them to the treatment plant. Treat them and then discharge them three miles offshore under the caveat of meeting Clean Water Act standards. Is that correct or not? Mr. Helmer.
Yes, that, that is correct. And and I can think the key distinction here is we're looking to have. Some agency that could be held accountable for when water quality standards are not being met.
Absolutely, which um, you know, the EPA seems to be the right choice, right? And you know, um. I do, I do want to make it a point that these three hundred million dollars that were secured. Thanks to our congressional delegation um, during the entire President Trump administration have not been implemented. And also, in fact, some of the funding programs that could go to fund wastewater infrastructure improvement projects. On the Mexican side, such as the Border Wastewater Infrastructure Program, has been zeroed out every single year. By the past administration. Um, so I am hopeful that through this BWIP program. The EPA can increase funding for it because ten million dollars is not enough to be able to. Repair infrastructure all along the border because ten million dollars are out, have been allocated for the entire border from California to Texas. I'm hopeful that with this new um. You know, nominee for EPA Administrator Michael Regan, who has been, has a proven track record as a champion, especially. When it relates to cleanup of rivers. He was actually responsible for cleaning uh, Cape Fear River of toxics. And has experienced working in low income communities affected by pollution. My hope is that through the BWIP program. We can attend some of these key issues that truly do affect Imperial Beach. Such as the San Antonio de los Buenos wastewater treatment plant, which is located. In Mexico and for which we have absolutely no control, but we certainly feel the effects anytime we have South to North Ocean currents. But what we can do here on the US side is support infrastructure on the US side. That can collect and treat and discharge while in compliance with the Clean Water Act. Treated effluent so that we prevent or minimize or mitigate. Beach closure days in Imperial Beach. So um, I want to reiterate and echo what the mayor said about Mr. Helmer. You being a lead on this issue and a champion for us. So thank you so much for all of your work, and I very much. Look forward to working with this new administration on this very issue.
Great, thank you. Um, Mr. Labor Gonzalez.
Mr. Helmer, thank you for your presentation. I have just one question. Time, you know, timeframe wise, how soon are we looking to start getting one of these projects? Started like to. You know, ground, you know, shovel and ground, let's get going. Uh. That, that's my only question.
Thank you. That's a, that's a very good question. I mean, in, in our opinion, we think IBWC could start working right now under their own authority to start implementing some of these projects. The problem is IBWC is not taking the action that we believe that they should be doing. We believe that they could be taking additional flows. We believe that they should be um, planning out trash booms right now in the main river channel. And and to that extent, we're working very closely with our congressional representatives to change the legislative language that tells IBWC what to do. So that they can actually implement under their own authority, some actions immediately, you know, we want them to catch more flows. Want them to stop the trash coming across from valley and and they can start on that right now and and in our opinion. Uh, in terms of the EPA process, well, EPA is going to follow the federal process, the appropriate federal process, and unless they can get shortcuts like the border wall. Did on, on cutting the environmental corners, they got to follow the full, full process. What, what that entails. Finish this, this technical analysis. So within the next couple of months, we're hoping to have recommendations in front of. In front of this current administration, and then they're going to plus a suite of these actions that that this three hundred million dollars can go, go towards. Then you can get the engineers to start fully designing, and at the same time, while you're designing the project, you do the environmental review. So we're looking at around a year of, of engineering, designing and 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 permitting. And then construction starting the grounds. So. Optimistically, a year, a year and a half from now is when you will see the first shovels going into the ground for, for one of these projects.
Thank you very much.
Great, Mr. Fisher, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, you know, I, I had the opportunity to go down to the Tijuana River Valley a few times in the past week and a half. And I was down there last Friday at about seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, and I'm, I'm blown away. With the fact that we live in such a wonderful country and what's happening down the Tijuana River Valley is being allowed to happen. I think it's negligence. Um, and it's just amazing. I think that the, the trash that collects down there is, I, I just can't believe it. I was, I just. Blown was blows my mind. And so I think that, you know, the first priority really is to, to clean up. That area that, that kind of where that comes from the uh, the border. Where they transitioned into the US all the way down to the Hollister Bridge. I mean, it looked like a. Trash collection center with tires and all kinds of stuff. And also have the opportunity to look over at Smugglers. Gold just passed their collection base, and I can tell you their booms are not working. Uh, all that trash is just flowing down, downstream, and I understand the flow is quite heavy as Mr. Helmet kind of described to us, but uh. You know, I, I think that the EPA really has to understand that for, for years, this has just been gross negligence. On the part of the city of San Diego, the state of California and our federal government, and it's time for things to change. The impact is continuing to uh, affect the residents of Imperial Beach in northward. I looked at the water quality standards that were taken. I, I can't remember the exact day, but it was in the last two weeks. And the water quality and the beaches in Coronado were worse than what they are in uh, Imperial Beach. And so I think that this water. Is being contaminated, traveling north, affecting our Navy, it's affecting tourism all up and down the coast uh, in San Diego. And so. I think it just really needs to, to get going. I appreciate everybody's efforts to, to bring this to light and to put the pressure on. Those, and I'm glad the EPA is involved. Three hundred million dollars isn't nearly enough uh, to solve this problem. It's a decent start. And I hope they make a, a good decision of what projects uh, get prioritized, but the cleaning of. Of the Tijuana River on the US side is just awful, and I think they need to get on that first. I also think that the um, the discharge that goes in the ocean, while the easiest solution is to just kind of push it out there. And we could argue all day long about the effects, but uh, obviously to treat sewage, you have to add something to it or do it through a process and. The water that's flowing out there isn't natural to uh, to the area it's going into. I would really like to see a, a reclamation of that water. It's being cleaned to a higher standard and perhaps being sold uh, back to not maybe sold or, or being used for San Diego County water at this point. It's coming from the Colorado River and it's an expensive thing. So I'd really like to see the uh, the EPA consider some projects that. Help with uh, reclamation of the water. If it's a for profit business, and again, that will just help with the maintenance and upkeep. That uh, that a facility like that needs and pushes into the right areas. So. Thanks for all you do, Chris, and uh, it was good to see that what I was seeing on Friday was. You know, kind of a little bit heavier flow than was normal and uh, you know, it's just, it's, it's really a shame. And I hope that we can get this solved together. As a, as a community and as uh, you know, partners in crime with.
Great, thank you. Uh, Count Member John Spriggs, did you want to speak again, or did, I, I know you already made a comment.
Not really on this. Uh, I, I made a comment on, 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 on a related uh, item on the letter. Actually, Mr. Mayor, uh, and fellow council members, uh, this is one of our most significant issues. If not the most significant issue that's immediately affecting um. Everybody in Imperial Beach, quality of life, tourism, revenues, uh, health. Et cetera. And um, I, I actually think it's, it's. If we don't do it tonight, we need to have a workshop where Chris describes and informs us all. About every single one of these proposed projects, the pros and cons and costs and probabilities. We just need to be informed as the elected representatives on exactly this, on the specifics. I don't mean the infinite project details and engineering specifics, but. What these mean, what they look like on a map and um, what effect each of them is going to have. And whether any of them is going to do anything by itself, or whether all of them. Have to be implemented in order for us to be free. Once and for all of this problem. Chris, you started it, and once again, I commend you for your work. Uh, we are so lucky to have you. And um, I know you wanted to keep it, you know, straightforward and short. Uh, and that's why you only mentioned the first one, which is diversion. So my question to you is, assuming we got project number one, how much of a solution would that be? And doesn't it also imply that some of the other projects? Have to be completed as well. For example, the expansion of the international uh, treatment plant. And possibly also the South Bay Water Reclamation Plant in order to accommodate the flows from a diversion system. Wouldn't we also have to do something to correct the canyon flows and make sure they all go? Into the new newly expanded treatment plant or plants, et cetera. So I guess what I'm saying is that maybe there's. In order to do one, we've got to do some of the others. And what? What do you, what do you see as the links for getting the most bang for the buck out of this list of ten? And what would that roughly cost, do you think?
Councilmember Spriggs, that, that's a, that's a doozy of a question, but I, I think you're picking up on a lot of the. Technical aspects of each of these components where you do have to kind of reverse engineer your solution. Starting with, well, how much floor are you going to be dealing with? How much floor are you going to be expecting to be put in the river if you help Mexico implement infrastructure? What size of plants are you going to be on? So there, there's a lot of these questions that you have, but, but I, I think I kind of want to point out that I think three hundred million dollars is enough. And the reason why I say that is we have these existing border programs that Councilmember Gary already mentioned, you know, the Border Water Infrastructure Program. You have NAD Bank loans, you have a Minute 320 work group with IBWC. So if every one of our agencies. Started to do their job and starting to focus on what they're supposed to be, I'm talking about the federal agencies here. Then we have enough resources on the table. So what we're really trying to push is a holistic approach here. Yes, every single one of these on here in some form or the other. Should be implemented in some way. Should it all be implemented using the USMCA funds? No, and where, where we're pushing the vast majority of the USMCA funds is on US side solutions. All the rest of these, these, these pieces here really need to be supported through NAD Bank, Border Water Infrastructure Funds, Minute 320 Process. And really having Mexico at the table. Um, a key component of any one of these is what is the commitment from Mexico to actually implement. Any of these additional parts that, that involve infrastructure in Mexico. To this point, there's been no engagement and involvement with Mexico um, with the EPA. So to, to that extent, that's why I think we really need to focus on project number one. And then all the rest of these projects really do get developed out through the existing bi-national programs, through the, the, the existing federal programs that are in place. And there, there's a number of them. Even beyond the ones that I've already mentioned, so that you do have this holistic approach um, to really address pretty much. Everything that you have to say, you know, have more water reuse in Mexico, having trash capture, expanding the, the capacity of the canyon. Have an infrastructure in Mexico, Mexico having responsibility for, for their own flows and discharge that are coming across the border. All, all these actions. And helping Mexico will reduce the cost of which it costs to operate and maintain the infrastructure we're pushing for in the United States. So I, I hope that kind of answers some of the question, but it, it is a kind of complicated answer.
Okay, well, yeah, I um. Again, I think we need a more detailed discussion on, on, on the projects. The strategy, what our strategy should be as a city. I think all council members need to be informed and up to date on the number one issue facing Imperial Beach, at least in the minds of. Number one issue facing Imperial Beach, at least in the minds of many, many people. And uh, so I would I would urge that we have a uh, a workshop to have. Uh, a more detailed presentation uh on this critical uh issue. I also know that we have litigation that's pending, that's been that's been put on hold. Uh, while uh, the discussions about projects uh are taking place. Uh, we we need to have a closed session. Uh, that talks about the status there, the status of that. And the uh strategy around the fact that there's been a change in administrations and perhaps a change in the. Uh, willingness to collap- to cooperate and get something done. Uh, that to me is in the context of of legal strategy and we should have a detailed discussion of legal strategy as a as a council. Regarding the cross-border pollution issue and all of all of the legal implications uh as well. So those are my requests to uh to uh to us as council. Uh, the mayor and city managers that we have a workshop for more details. And probably followed by a closed session where we're more informed on the uh, on the legal. Uh, challenges and aspects. That's that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Um, City Clerk Kelly, did you have any additional? I think you said there were some public comments that we hadn't read.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two public comments. The first one is from Dave Wells. And he says, the city of San Diego needs to get on board as well. With getting the trash and brushes cleaned up. I know Nora Roberts is new to the council for San Diego. But this is her district. To be running a district with this issue, I'd be embarrassed if she can't step up and get the area cleaned up. We're talking about the dead trees and brushes, but the trash collection looked horrible when I went to check out the scene after the rain. It was a huge difference when I went to the same location down south two days before the rain. It blew my mind. And then he further stated that um, he wasn't sure if it's Vivian Moreno. Whomever the council person that runs the Tijuana River Valley area. And the second message is from Vivian J. Marquez and she says. Do we have a completion slash deadline date for the EPA analysis? Can we encourage EPA to look at short-term projects again? Might you know how much of the three hundred million has already been spent? Thank you, Vivian Marquez Waller. And that is the final comment, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Helmer, do you know how much the EPA has already spent?
Uh, probably almost none of it, I suspect. It hasn't been very much other than just this technical anal- analysis. So I think there's lots of money left.
And is there a timeline? Do they have a timeline?
We we have our next um, meeting with EPA February twenty fifth. And we're hoping to get it updated and hopefully in in expedited timeline, but we're we're expecting within months to have answers.
Great. And then not just for the record, just in comment for the uh, one of the public letters that was read. Uh, Nora Vargas is represents the county of San Diego and then um. Vivian Moreno represents the city of San Diego and her district does include the Tijuana River Valley. The agencies that have. Overlapping jurisdiction or jurisdiction in the River Valley include the county of San Diego, the state of California. And obviously all different types of agencies and the United States federal government. Um, the city of Imperial Beach. Is at the end of, as you know, a small portion of its coastline goes to the US Mexico border as kind of a sliver. But the area that is impacted generally upstream is uh under the jurisdiction of the city of San Diego, the county. The state of California or uh the federal government. And I should have mentioned the city of San Diego. Um. So any addition, I just want to make sure, any additional public comment? City Clerk Kelly?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks. So, you know, just to just to make sure we're all clear on where ninety percent of the flows and the sewage flows come from that result in beach closures. Ninety nine point nine percent or basically a hundred percent either from this raw sewage and toxic waste coming out of the Tijuana River. Number two, raw sewage and toxic waste coming out of the canyons that feed into the Tijuana River. Raw sewage and toxic waste being dumped uh applies to Tijuana and overburdened pump stations. Raw sewage and toxic waste being dumped at the Punt de la Andes Treatment Plan of San Antonio Los Buenos. So. Um, that adds up to a hundred percent of all the beach closures that we get. Um, and it's really important that the city of Imperial Beach. Um, you know, we work with the highest level of engineers and science and involved here. You know, it's it's really important that we. Stick to a system in which engineers use credible science, incredible engineers. Uh, make proposals and then document impacts. I think that's really critical. We have probably. Our beaches monitored more than any other beach in the country, if not the planet. Uh, we've advanced. Type of testing that's carried out along with the scripts and traditional motionography in the county of San Diego. And and just also to be clear, thanks to Mr. Helmer, our lifeguards and the city council in our city. We got the county to do daily testing in Imperial Beach. I think that is um, really. Showed us how polluted our beaches all the time and not just in rainwater events. Uh, it's really important. We just, Chris and I just met with EPA um, sort of consultants to talk about, get feedback on process. And obviously for me, this should start tomorrow. Uh, it it should have started years ago. Um, but it's also important to say that. Uh, we, I get a little concerned in uh, Mr. Fisher, I I want to thank you for your comment. It it basically is whatever it costs, we should fix this. We waited way too long. So the more we wait. The more expensive it gets. But um. I I get concerned when bureaucrats start talking about, well, we need to save money. And I I I have to give credit to Mayor Faulkner when he was in office, you know, we're um, before we went to the White House. Um, said, we what we don't want to do is have some, a small project. Because in ten years, we'll be back here advocating for something, right? We want to fix this now. And so. The the item number one, the newer Tijuana River Diversion System and Treatment in the United States. There's a proposal to treat one hundred sixty-five million gallons a day of 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 flows in that river. Um, I think it would reduce beach closure days to like ten or twelve. Uh, that's not good enough, but it's much better than anything out other advocated. And. You know, that's that's the goal here is to reduce each, reduce beach closure days. Everyone's gotten way too used to having this happen. And so they just kind of given up. And and you know, frankly, it shouldn't be the city of Imperial Beach constantly pushing on this. There should be a whole plethora of agencies and staffers that are. Addressing every single flow and every single spill that happens, but frankly, it's Mr. Helmer. Um, who's working with people like Dave Gibson of the Water Board and then has to back channel to Mexico. To get things to be turned on and to find out what's happening. So we're back to where we were. More than four years ago when we had this the mega spill, or actually, yes, four years ago. Um, which means that there is no communication. There there's loads of misinformation. Um, the United, Mexico does not communicate with the United States. The IBWC does not communicate very effectively with its own citizens. And um, and stakeholders and and obviously there's spills non-stop. We made state very clear in the summer when we had a a press conference with former EB, the former EPA Administrator. That um, we are very concerned with what was happening in Mexico. Then the next, the governor of Mexico of Baja California, Jaime Bornea. Declared that the problem, mission accomplished, they had fixed the problem and that um, he just. Spent all, I think it was multiple press conferences blasting me for saying that this problem needed to be fixed. Lo and behold. I wasn't a fortune teller. We just know what was happening. Um, this problem's gotten worse than ever. And um. And Mr. Fisher, you're right about Coronado. It's crazy how fast that 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 current goes north and flows out of the River Valley, which you can see on the scripts. Monitoring site. And uh, and so we have some problems. Uh, City Clerk Kelly or maybe City Attorney Lyon, I'm not sure. Can we add, can we ask that? This council write a letter to or propose that we uh, ask the county and the state of California. And the federal government to declare this a a public health emergency and a and a and a state of emergency and. Um, declare a state of emergency in this area? Or is that something we have to do separately?
Um, Mayor DeDino, this is City Attorney Lyon. So this is a discussion item on the Tiju- Tijuana River Pollution. So. You can recommend that staff, you know, write letters. If if the council was going to adopt a resolution, we would put that on a future agenda.
Right, okay.
Want to direct staff to write a letter, you can provide that direction.
Well, yeah, it'd be great. I'm I'm assuming the council would support this, but um, let.
Absolutely.
Everything possible to advocate and and get this at the highest level of attention. So. It it, I I would like to see our 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 staff write letters to the county and the state of California and the federal government to make sure that this is declared a public health emergency. A state of emergency and possibly a national security uh emergency. I mean, this is a problem. It's impacting our Navy SEALs. Our border patrol agents as well as our cities. Um, and then I I'd like to see an additional letter to uh. The folks that regulate the EnviroScreen process because it's clear that that process. Which states that IB doesn't have an air pollution problem has not taken into account the latest science from the Scripps Institution Oceanography that shows that. There's significant contaminants in the air and really fecal matter and toxic waste in the air. Uh, from these sewage flows and that obviously has a huge public health impact. I know that. Uh, Supervisor Nora Vargas had proposed doing a a public health emergency and declaring a state of emergency, but we make sure the county. Um, uh, gets on that and takes this a lot more seriously.
Mr. Mayor, could I just um, uh, support a hundred percent what you're what you're asking for? Uh, and also. Uh, remind or uh, inform the new members and and remind all of us that. Uh, the city has a renewable emergency declaration. Uh, already, we have it. Uh, we renew it every month. Uh, and it's just consistent with that to take the action that you're you're talking about, I believe, uh, with other jurisdictions. Uh, secondly, both the League of California Cities and the National League of Cities, and I believe the National Counties. Have uh adopted resolutions declaring this, if not an emergency, but a a a serious problem that needs to be addressed. That was uh, about a year ago. And uh, so we have the support of the. Of the League of California Cities, including the San Diego Division and all of our neighbors on that resolution. Uh, and let's see, there was one final thing as well. I can't remember what it was right now, but um. I I think there are a lot of references to these kinds of resolutions and um. The the parties in our lawsuit, et cetera, that have come together that we can cite. Uh, and and rely on for further support now that we want to escalate, have to escalate this once again. As you said, we're right back where we were four years ago. We we have to keep pushing hard and we can't uh, can't slack off now. So I'm I'm with you a hundred percent. Let's move this forward.
Yeah, that's that's right. And you know, regardless of who's in Washington, we we have to continue to push this. You know, it'd be great if. The minute we had a new president that the water stopped, but you know, the sewage flow stopped. But in fact, as Mexico's a mess right now, you know, the. Uh, the mayor of Tijuana just stepped down for the second time in the leave of absence. We've got all kinds of machinations and political machinations going on with the state of Baja California and the governor's race. Uh, and you know, the federal government's broke. Um, and uh, and so. We can't trust Mexico to fix this process, even though they should. Should there be a hundred percent wastewater reuse in Tijuana? Absolutely. Should federal taxpayers pay for that? Absolutely not. Should it be a public-private sector, public-private partnership? Absolutely. So uh, you know, should our State Department and other agencies push a lot harder on this? Absolutely. Should every agency, whether it's the state of California, the counties in San Diego and the city of San Diego, push a lot more on this? Absolutely. Everybody needs to step up and do way more on this because, you know, I think. It's just a little bit of exhausting when the smallest actor or the one who's most impacted is the one that steps up the most. And is pushing the hardest to make this happen. Every other agency needs to do a lot more. Obviously in Mexico. They need to fix their sewer system. I mean, no one can should make any excuses about why they can't. Um, and then number two, but our own federal government needs to spend whatever it takes to stop this problem because. This wouldn't be happening in Beverly Hills. It wouldn't be happening in La Jolla. It wouldn't be happening in in New York. It's happening in Imperial Beach. Because people have let it happen and they've made excuses about why they can't fix it and why things should take so long. So. Anyway, we're going to continue to push and hammer on this. We don't care who's in Washington. Who cares in Sacramento? Um, we just want to stop the sewage and and get people to do the right thing. So with that, I want to thank you for Mr. Helmer. Um, you know, I see. I'm I'm there with behind it with you behind the scenes. Um, and it's, you know, I really appreciate your leadership at all, your leadership of the entire city council. Uh, and our city staff as well as all our residents who have been pushing on this. Especially those who are using the credible credible science, real science, real engineering and talking about real impacts. Rather than making things up and using fake science to do so. So anyway, with that, I would like to um. Move on to number four and that's City of Imperial Beach Response and Actions to Address the Impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And Assistant City Manager Martinez will give the report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members of the public, Assistant City Manager Cortez giving you a regular COVID update. Um, the vaccination here in Imperial Beach um is moving to Mar Vista High School effective um, February ninth. The address is on the screen, five oh five Elm Avenue. We've been told that they will expand capacity. Uh, we know that the appointments right now and the capacity for that is existential. Um, they're going to honor second appointments. Uh, so whoever has scheduled the second appointment here at this location. Will be able to transfer to Mar Vista High School. There's enough parking there as well. Um, and the logistics. Um, just fits better for the community. To schedule an appointment, you can visit www dot coronavirus dash S D dot com. I would like to highlight that I was. Reminded by the county that Sharp Resilling and UCUS UC uh San Diego have their own appointment centers. However, it is all centralized. So if you visit the coronavirus S D dot com, you should be able to navigate. The Sharp and UC San Diego Appointment Centers as well. These are the current numbers of how many doses have been um, provided here in San Diego County specifically for an Imperial Beach. Uh, or the SIP code nine one nine three two as of one fifteen, as January fifteen, there has been two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine. Uh, vaccines administer. And of course, we hope to get more now that the Mar Vista facility will be open. On your screen, you can see the tiers. We're still on tiers uh, one, uh, A, T one, T two and T three. So these are the healthcare professionals. Uh, people that live and um, the home, the senior homes like the mayor announced. Uh, two of the facilities in Imperial Beach have been secure and uh, you know, uh, people that work in in the facilities as well. Persons of age of seventy-five and older. So they're going to the next phase, um, addressing the next phase as we speak. Current cases, uh, total confirmed cases in in the San Diego County is two hundred and forty fifty. Um, in in deaths, two thousand six twenty-nine as of uh today. Uh, and specifically in Imperial Beach has had two thousand two hundred and thirty-two cases. Uh, I like to highlight the hospitalization. Uh, now is ten thousand two hundred and fifty-five. Um, which is one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one more since last time we gave you an update. So. The hospitalization continues to increase. Um, and so it's very important that we do get those vaccinations. Uh, there has been a lot of uh, questions about the volunteers. Uh, the county uh does express. Uh, the need of vaccinators and volunteers. Uh, there are three categories of volunteers. One of them is through the county. Um, this is going through their San Diego Medical Reserve Corporation. They need vaccinators that are licensed, such as physicians, nurses, uh, you know, even dentists. Um, but they also need other non-professional to help with logistics. To sign up for the volunteer program, visit www dot healthcare volunteers dot com. I'm sorry, dot C A dot G O V. Uh, there is an application process and a verification and a brief training that will be required. The second one is at UCSD. This is uh currently the San Diego Superstation at Petco Park. Again, they are in need of vaccinators and general volunteers, a license, uh, even unmeasured professionals. And others that are not medical to assist with logistics, helping with appointments, uh, monitoring patients that are already got. Their vaccine, uh, you know, parking, general questions and things like that. To sign up with UCSD, the superstation at Petco Park, visit ucsdhealth dot semitarian dot com. And the last one is at Sharp. Currently, there's Sharp, uh, Chila Vista Super Site and La Mesa, and I know they're in the works of opening more. Uh, again, vaccinators and general volunteers. Um, to sign up with Sharp, visit. Uh, www dot sharp dot com. Now, each of these vaccinator facilities are managing. Their volunteer program differently. Um, anybody who is eligible under these. Uh, or meets these qualifications and. Anybody who is eligible under these or meets these qualifications and is eligible is. Is recommended to visit each of the locations, follow the instructions, sign up. Again, each of the locations is going to be different. And we'll be going through a different, you know, requirement, whether it's approving the license or training, et cetera. Some of them are being compensated. Some of them are a hundred percent volunteer. They are also asking for Spanish speakers to help with the registration and some of the logistics. And reminding our community that COVID testing is still free and still available here in Imperial Beach at our Sports Park Recreation Center. Four two five Imperial Beach Boulevard, Monday through Friday from eight thirty AM to four PM. Just want to give you an update on the current health order. We are heard it from the news, but you know, just want to. Inform the community as well that as of January twenty fifth. The regional stay at home order was lifted at limited. So California has basically returned to the purple tier. And it's going to be sort of a county by county restrictions. Hair nail salons may reopen with certain protocols in place. Restaurants and churches can resume. What outdoor operations with protocols? If they have a a place of business. That the ten PM to five AM curfew has been lifted. And the health order still requires the mask and social distances continue. Also reminded that Imperial Beach City Council has adopted Resolution Number twenty twenty one hundred. Requiring any person visiting the city of Imperial Beach to wear a face covering when they're at a public areas. This was effective September seventeen. With that, Mayor Council concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Assistant City Manager Cortez. Do we have any public comments, City Core Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, I will begin with. Members of the public participating by Zoom. Anyone participating by Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Okay, Mr. Mayor, there are no public speakers, but I do have one written comment. And it's from Josie Hamada. And she says, good evening, City Manager Hall, Mayor DeDina and Council members. City of Imperial Beach, response and actions to address the impacts of COVID nineteen pandemic. As we enter almost one year living in the COVID nineteen pandemic situation. I sincerely wish to thank the Imperial Beach staff and elected officials in every effort to support the IB community. Maneuver through this pandemic. This last January, when the city of IB opened the community room to begin to. To minister the vaccine with the San Diego County Health Department taking the lead. There was a bright light for folks to get their vaccine, but that location proved to be small. For the demand and now with the okay for the Mar Vista Gym, I hope this site is open soon because I'm sure you're all aware of the need. I sincerely thank you all working to support our citizens in Imperial Beach. Josie Hamada, IB resident. And Mr. Mayor, that's the final comment.
Great. Thank you so much. I will close the public comment period then. We will close the public comment period now. And then we can start with City Council discussion, questions, starting with Councilmember Gary.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Cortez. I just think it's wonderful that you updated us on the need for vaccinators. That was something that county staff flagged for me day one since the vaccination pod opened up and especially as. As far as bilingual healthcare professionals that they need in order to roll out the vaccinations as fast and, you know, as effectively as possible. I just want to encourage everybody to go and continue to try to get an appointment. I know that has been. An issue for many of residents that have reached out to me that they have not been able to. Acquire an appointment, but I think it's just a matter of persistence and we will get across the finish line. So. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Labor Gonzalez.
Thank you very much for all the valuable info. I appreciate it. No additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher.
You know, it's good to see Imperial Beach taking lead and, Mr. Mayor, I applaud your efforts and the rest of the city staff for making the vaccine. Put it in an area that was close to the residents from Pearl Beach. I know it's been well received and much appreciated. I've heard from. A few residents who've who've gotten the vaccine and it's just wonderful to see. And it'd be really nice if, Mayor, if you were in charge of distribution and getting the stuff rolled out throughout the city and the. The state, we'd probably have a little bit more numbers to show during a presentation. But again, thanks to everybody and. I look forward to seeing it at the Mar Vista High School and that partnership is invaluable, not only for us as a city, but as a community. So glad to see that going forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilman Fisher. Appreciate that. And Mayor Prochance Frigs.
Just wanted to thank city staff and. Erica for her leadership in this effort. All aspects of it, from the social distancing and mask campaign to. Testing to vaccines and you as well, Mr. Mayor. I guess the the only question I have is, are we diverting attention and resources away from the still much needed? Testing aspect in order to focus on vaccines or can we? Can we do both at the same time? And emphasize both and the need for both at the same time. It'll be a long time before we reach herd immunity. Where everyone is safe. So testing and the other measures, social distancing, mask wearing will still be important for. You know, foreseeable future. So I just ask Erica the the question about the other measures as well as testing. Thank you.
Councilmembers Bricks, Assistant City Manager Cortez, as of today, county is very interested to maintaining the testing site in Imperial Beach. And having those simultaneously. And if I may, I forgot to point out on the appointment. For the last two days, they had a glitch in the system and for the last two days, we were able to secure. Appointments for community members. Staff were getting a lot of calls just because, you know, the center is located here. It's hard for them to understand, you know, who manages. So, you know, we took the time to be able to secure appointments for them and it was relatively easy. So I think it's improving. We did also get confirmation earlier today that. The District One. Is in the county is deploying a pilot to work with county. Facilitators and also medical practitioners to assist with those appointments and not only use two one one because two one one is for the moment is only helping those that are seventy five and older. But we were facing with challenges on making the appointments, whether they don't have a computer or, you know, technical reasons. So. Good news that they're piloting that program and it should smooth. Be so smooth to make those appointments.
Great. Any additional questions or comments? Great. Well, thanks. First, thank you, Assistant City Manager Cortez. We have some really competent, professional and dogged staff and you do not want to get in the way of Assistant City Manager Cortez when she needs to get things done. And I applaud you for that. We are in awe of your capacity to make things happen and move. Difficult to not to not take no for an answer. So I we appreciate your leadership. And moving things forward. And just to just to answer the issue on testing. Yeah, testing, obviously, you answered that question, Assistant City Manager Cortez, is critical, but I I just seen the last couple of days. That the Biden administration made a two hundred and thirty million dollar deal with an Australian company to do self tests. And I think that's where we're going to. That should have happened a year ago. Didn't happen, but. We should be able to take a fifteen minute test and that apparently it's ninety something percent accurate. It's an Australian company doing it, doing it. So hopefully that will happen. That should help facilitate a lot of things. So we don't have to wait in line and. And and take time to do it. We should get immediate results back rather than have to wait days and days, which has helped exacerbate the pandemic. On the vaccine front, I want to again thank the Sweetwater School District, Paula Hall, Moises Segury. And the principal of Mar Vista for agreeing to make that happen immediately. It was all hands on deck. And believe me, you're right, Mr. Fisher. If the city of Imperial Beach had been running this, we would have had all our essential workers, all our public safety staff, our sheriff's deputies. Everyone that needed to be done would have been vaccinated by now. But instead, we're have to deal with this bureaucratic. System that's super inefficient, these mass testing sites. I'm hopeful that there could be more of a movement to decentralize and work with cities. But that may not happen. But we have been pushing that. But it's happening way too slowly, obviously. But it's clear we won't get back until. Hopefully the summer and or the fall. The big issue that I've been raising is that. Mexico, the vaccine rollout is a disaster. The scale of which is incomprehensible right now. People are just starting to realize that Mexico may not get vaccinated until next year. Which could, you know, have a huge impact on us. We've got people crossing the border. Who aren't vaccinated. So that's going to be something our State Department and others have to work with, but it will definitely have an impact on us. Just one thing to be clear about, though. The city of Imperial Beach has been really great on getting, you know, dealing with this crisis. And that's why our rates are lower. Our COVID rates and illness rates are lower than than our neighbors just next to us in in San Diego. It's just. It's remarkable to see the difference. I was just on the San Diego Union website tonight where they show the zip codes that are impacted and. Our rates for COVID are significantly lower than the zip codes to the east of us. And that's a testament to the work that we've done. With our residents and, you know, and all the outreach and even the the early closure that we did before anyone else over a year ago. So. Want to thank our city staff and our council and all our residents who take this very seriously. And, you know, again, I will say this clearly. Our goal is to get everyone back to work. If it was up to me, we would have had all our essential workers and every business in the city vaccinated by now. All our seniors vaccinated, all our block. Peace officers and deputies. Everybody. And we're pushing to make that happen. We are not satisfied with progress. And one thing I think I've been saying a lot of public meetings is. If we continue to do the same things that we all, the way that we always did, we're bound to fail. The way that we did business before doesn't work. It's way too slow, way too bureaucratic. Some of us are learning that, but others seem to be just repeating the same circular mistake of throwing bureaucracy to everything and thinking that. It's only a government solution when it should be public private partnerships and people being creative about how to solve problems. So with that, thanks, everybody. I get off my soapbox about solving problems, but it does take dogged effort to make it happen. And I think. That's one thing people have forgotten that if you if you do things in a normal way to solve huge problems, nothing happens. You've got to really push, 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 push hard to make anything happen when you're dealing with a situation, whether it's sewage. Or this pandemic or getting vaccination. So we're used to doing that here. It seems like other people in in government agencies aren't so so much. Anyway. And so now some good news. Item number five, City Council update on recent development projects before and after. I love these reports. So Community Development Director Foltz will give the report, and this is just good news on all the things that have happened. And all the significant difference we're making right here in IB and and doing things that improve the quality of life for all our residents in our neighborhood. So please. Development Director Foltz, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Community Development Director Foltz, and this is just a reminder that this is just an informational item about. Projects that have already been completed, so it doesn't require any city council action or discussion. One thing, though, is if I'm speaking too much or too little, or if you want me to stop, feel free to let me know. I can go back to other pictures or move ahead. So. This is really just a before and after slideshow of what projects look like before development and after development. So to begin, we'll start towards the eastern portion of the city. This is obviously in the city of San Diego, but it's something that had an impact for residents of Imperial Beach. Also. This is the Pond Twenty fence, and this is what that fence used to look like for for quite some time. And then the port came and said, you know, we should. Make some improvements to this fence, which the city agreed with. And they showed the recommendation on the top. That was the the rendering that they provided at the time. And if you go out there today, the fence looks nearly like that rendering. So it's a very. Great improvement from what existed at that time. And as we move forward with this.
Just to make sure we're clear on the order of it was the city that pushed on that fence. And we were great. The port came up with the idea, but let, believe me, it was the city that made that happen. So but and we appreciated the support of the port and getting it.
You're a hundred percent right. Sorry about that. That is that is definitely true. And I remember those meetings at the city council. That's for sure. So as we move forward with this slideshow, we'll be heading more or less down Palm Avenue, westward towards Palm Avenue, and we'll loop around the town. The next one is the Bike Way Village Project, which is something you could see here, over here. These are those buildings. And this is the rendering that was provided at the time for the Bike Way Village Project, and this is what it looks like today. Now I'm going a little out of order. I'm showing you what it looks like today because. Some people may have forgotten what it used to look like. And this is what those buildings used to look like at the Bike Way Village Project. It was two warehouse buildings that were fairly underutilized. Another vantage point of those buildings. And this is that site. So it's two buildings. And at that time, this prod, this area was in the R three thousand D zone, so you could only build residential development. So the property owner said, well, I want to, I want to do something a little different. I want to try and revitalize these buildings, do something commercial. And have a connection to the bike path. So with that, it became a larger project where it became a redevelopment project, a private project, and we were able to get grant funding to. Connect the bike path and provide other improvements to what you see today. A revitalization of the buildings. A nice pier area, a deck area, new parking and a nice connection to the bike path. And this is just showing a before and after of that area. And you can see the stark contrast of what existed before and what's out there currently. And this is during construction of the project. So what they did was they started opening up holes in the in the front of the building. So that they could face the bay because the bay is obviously a very key component that we want access to. So this project opened up views to the bay area. And this is what we see out there today. And a before and after. And I will go to the American Legion Project. So it's been a while since this has been constructed, and this is what the American Legion looked like before. Clearly, it needed some rehabilitation. So the developer put together some redevelopment package, became an affordable housing project where they can keep the American Legion on the ground floor, but also construct affordable housing. So this is what the rendering looked like. And if you go out there today, it looks nearly exactly like the rendering. So there's twenty nine affordable units, one manager unit, and then the American Legion on the ground floor. And this is just showing you a before and after. This is the North Island Credit Union Building. Now this one, I forgot what it even looked like before construction. So this was at the corner of Eleventh and Palm Avenue. And this is what you'll see out there today. That was constructed around two thousand seven or so, two thousand eight, and you can see the building still looks brand new. And this is showing a contrast between what existed before and what's out there currently. I I'm sure most remember this. This is the the mobile gas station, but it wasn't always the mobile gas station. And this is what the building looked like just before. This building was rehabilitated. So mobile came forward and wanted to revitalize the building. This is the rendering they provided. And again, it looks nearly like the rendering. One of the key components that they added was a lot of landscaping. You could see in the back, they added landscaping. That was a condition from the city council to make sure that it screens the properties to the south. And also some new landscaping surrounding the property and off of Highway seventy five here, where there used to be an additional curb cut, and we removed one of the curb cuts to add. Extra safety and it's also increased the aesthetics on the project. And here's that before and after. This is six forty Florida Street. It was a large lot, again, underutilized lot. And the applicant came forward with a nine unit project. And this is what is out there currently. And again, before and after. And this is Donics and Thirteenth. It was a mortuary for quite some time, and then it was a church for a little while. And then the applicant came forward or the new property owner came forward and wanted to build eight new units on there. And this is the rendering. And this is what you'll see at that corner today. Moving forward, Tenth and Donics, this is what that lot looked like. And this was also a redevelopment housing project where we were able to partner with Habitat for Humanity to build six affordable units, and that's what's out there today. And before and after. This is a fairly recent project with the Jack in the Box and it had that drive through that would. This is a fairly recent project with the Jack in the Box, and it had that drive-through that would open to a large sea of asphalt. And this was the rendering that was offered. It would still have a drive-through, but it obviously enhanced so that it would provide greater aesthetics along the frontage on the street. And we think that that was achieved essentially on the project where you see the building and it's inviting for pedestrians as well. And here you can see the, what it was, the rendering and what's out there today. This is probably most people's favorite site. This is Ninth and Palm, Breakwater. This is what the existing or the shopping center was in 2006, as you could see on the bottom right-hand corner. And I like this image because it really shows the difference between where the street was and where the the ground level was. So it was, I don't know how many feet, I don't remember how many feet, it was 10, 10, 10 to 12 feet or more of a drop-off from the street to the site. And there was no pedestrian walkability or path of travel. It was a very, very dangerous situation. And also, the residential streets led directly into the project site. This was also a redevelopment project, and for quite some time it got got held up. And it was demolished and scraped and laid vacant. So a lot of people probably remember it looking like this for quite some time. And these were the original plans that were proposed. But then, after some time, the applicant came forward and said, you know what, we want to do some more classic timeless look. So they changed some of the aesthetics of the of the buildings. And this just shows you the difference in the buildings. This is on the right is what was originally proposed. And then Breakwater Sudbury came forward and wanted to change the design. So they changed it. It was reviewed by the Designer Board and City Council to the appearance that we see out there today. So again, just showing some of the differences between what was proposed before at the bottom here and then what was ultimately built at the top. And this is what you'll see at the at the corner right now, and you see these great murals at the at the corners as well. And this is what the project site looked like with these residential streets running through Delaware through 8th. This was after the sites were, the buildings were demolished. One of the roads was removed. Delaware still remained. And then this is after construction and build-out. And this North Island Credit Union Building is where the Hampton Inn is located currently. This was originally going to be the location of two other commercial buildings, but they weren't able to get tenants. So they went through the the process to switch it to a hotel project. And after much review, this is what was constructed, the Hampton Inn. So just a before and after. As we go further west, we see the Bayside Landing Project used to be called Bernardo Shores, as you can see here, with these recreational vehicles. And this is what that project site looked like before. And so the applicant came forward and wanted to construct a residential project, but also construct a bike path along the northern edge, set back the buildings from the pond about 100 feet, which is a standard requirement, but also connect a bike path to the Bay Shore Bike Way. And these were the designs that were approved. And this just shows you an idea of demolition that took place and the construction that took place. All this area used to be concrete and area for the RVs. And what we're seeing here is where the bike path would extend to. And one of the, one of the tricky things back here is a lot of these properties had access to their phone lines, AT&amp;T poles were off of this alley. So one of the requirements from the city council was to underground all utilities. So the applicant had to coordinate with each and every property owner to place the AT&amp;T lines to the buildings through this alley so that they could underground all these poles and all of these lines. And this shows you some of the the construction work that took place to build the bike path, which is one of the the essential components of that project. And right here, we're seeing the restoration of Wetland, where it used to be a portion of the RV park, setback further, and they were restoring Wetland. And this is what you'll see out there today with that trailhead and bike path. And this is that wetland we were looking at earlier. And this is showing you the continuation of the bike path. And one of the interesting things here is the applicant had to get an easement from MTS, who maintains the San Diego and Arizona Eastern Railway Company easements. And one of the requirements to be able to connect this portion to the bike path was to get that easement and keep these rail lines exposed, which is something that they were able to obtain. And just a before and after. And here you could see just the difference in aerials between the existing or the old site with the Bernardo Shores and then how the project was set back, how these wetlands were restored, they constructed the bike path and connected it to the Bay Shore Bike Way. This was a housing project at Second and Daisy Avenue. This is the rendering that was proposed. And what's out there looks very similar to the rendering. And just a before and after. The Palm Avenue Street End, this is how most of us think of it today. But not that long ago, this is what it used to look like. So again, just a before and after on the Palm Avenue Street End, showing that right-of-way improvements are very important as well. This is Dunes Park, area of the grass that was fairly underutilized, which is now a fitness court today. A-12 Ocean Lane was a vacant piece of land between two other condo projects that had already been developed. It was already anticipated that there'd be a residential unit here, which is why they built this seawall originally. And this was a rendering that was, or some drawings that were provided to the city. And it looks nearly like that drawing as as it's existing today. This is the Cronado Brewing Company site. It was previously Jersey Boys. Before that, it was MZM Bistro and maybe a few other things. This is how many people remember the site, but Cronado Brewing came in, did a lot of improvements to the exterior and also interior, and it's a, it's a great-looking building today. This is the Hess project, where you can see what it used to appear like, even though you see this grass field and this building, what you don't see are the underlying lots. So this was three separate lots owned by two separate owners. So the applicant had approval to proceed on a project on these back two lots, but not the one on the front. So he came forward with a project that only utilized these back two lots. As he was processing his project, he received authorization to process a project on the front lot. So he modified his project to incorporate all of those lots. And once he started construction, this is what it looked like when he started in the middle, as he was processing the authorization for the front. And this is during construction. And this is what it looks like today. One of the key items I like to point out is, and I'm sure everybody remembers, are these palm trees that would extend into the sidewalk where two pedestrians couldn't really get by in passing. And so what this project did was provide a wider sidewalk where you don't have any of those cutouts. This is the Citymark Project at 119 Elm Avenue. It was a vacant lot. They came forward with proposing to construct three units, and that's what's out there today. And at the same time, they processed a project for mixed-use development with commercial below 11 units. This is what the lot looked like before. This was the rendering that they provided to the city. And this was without, what's out there today. Clearly, a very nice aesthetic appearance from Seacoast Drive, especially the improvements that Brigantine came in with on that bottom floor. And one of the components that they've added was this outdoor seating. The city council authorized some encroachment. Still maintaining a six-foot distance on the sidewalk, but allowing some encroachment so that they could have additional outdoor seating. And here's the difference from what the site looked like, what it was proposed to be, and what it is today. That theme of the encroachment can be seen on the IB Forum project as well. So this was the the building for the IB Forum. They applied for an encroaching permit to utilize some of the right-of-way for outdoor seating, and they were able to build some, a nice outdoor seating area that you can see in the picture. The IB Boulevard project is one of the larger improvement projects that we've had in the city. This is what the estuary area of IB Boulevard looked like for quite some time, a very narrow sidewalk. And with the provision of various grants and permits and all kinds of things, it was a stormwater grant, it was an active transportation grant, I think. It was a bike grant, all kinds of things. Chris and Eric know that better, better than me, but what I know is the result is that it resulted in this wonderful world-class estuary pedestrian area, also a bike path, and you could see how wide of a nice area this is right now. And this just shows you the difference between what exists, what existed before and what's out there currently. And you can see the difference between that sidewalk, which is about maybe five feet or so, to what's out there today, which is over 20 feet. And of course, you could see that the wonderful designs that mimic the estuary that it's adjacent to. These are just some of the pictures. And as you head further to the east on IB Boulevard, you can see some of those, this is the existing or previous layout of IB Boulevard. And then the project was also a safe route to school. So that enhanced the sidewalks near the school as well, and it added some new crosswalks, some new medians to provide some additional safety. But it didn't really reduce the travel times along IB Boulevard. It just made it a lot safer. And of course, it's that more aesthetically pleasing as well. And here you can see the difference between what existed at the time and what's out there currently. And you can see these new cutouts for the trees as well. This is the Boys and Girls Club building, fairly stark facade for quite some time. And they came forward and wanted to provide some aesthetic enhancements on their building. And what they built looks very nice, very inviting currently. So this just shows you a before and after of that as well. And here's the library, something that we all remember. It was here for for quite some time. The county came forward and said that they were interested in the new library project. But the issue is their property line ended right around here in the parking lot area, so they weren't able to construct a new library to meet any of the specs that were more modern. So they asked the city to be able to use or modify the lot lines and utilize the Mar Vista Center area so that the Mar Vista Center meeting room would become part of the library essentially, and the library would be able to grow larger. And this is what was their original concept, just finding out if it would work. Once there was interest in being able to construct a new library, they went forward with a process where they were able to select well, TB Pennick and Sons, where it was the contractor who built it, but Jeff Katz was the architect behind the project. This is the rendering that he provided to the city. And that's what you'll see out there today. The wonderful contrast in what existed and what's out there currently. And this is the last project I'll point out is the Pier South. And now, again, we all remember what it looks like right now. I'm just showing that up front. This is the very nice Pier South building. As you see it today, this is what it used to look like, a very large parking lot adjacent to the street, and the building was further out to the west. It had fallen into disrepair, as you could see from these pictures. And this is what it looked like for for quite some time, and this was also a redevelopment project. And after many, many years of work, the city was able to work with the developers so that the Pier South could be built. And this was the condition of the building. So part of the project included removing a lot of that deck area. And the property owner's property line actually went fairly far out into the sand. But they didn't utilize that area. They removed a lot of the decking, and they were able to restore a lot of the sand out there. And this is just showing a before and after of that as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Foltz. Amazing. Wow. Great. Great job. Great work and obviously significant change for the better for Imperial Beach. So with that, we have any public comment, City Corps Kelly?
Mayor, let me check with the members of the public. Members of the public, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. And Mr. Mayor, there are no public comments.
Great. We can start with council comments with Councilmember Labor Gonzalez.
Excellent slideshow. I can really appreciate the before and after. Man, it really contributes to making Imperial Beach look so much nicer. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, you know, the only comment I, or suggestion I'd give to Tyler is next time you do a slideshow like that, just some soft music is definitely a trip down memory lane for me. All those areas down by the beach, I remember growing up. We played wiffle ball where my cast was. And, you know, we'd surf right next to where the Pier South is. So it's really nice to see, you know, as a longtime resident. I'm so happy that the improvements that I've made have done with, been done with taste and with class. You know, I think our library is probably the best-looking library throughout the entire county. It's got some, you know, it just looks like Imperial Beach. And so I'm I'm just grateful for the city staff and all the people that some, some big vision to make Imperial Beach better. And it's a model for us to go forward that, you know, we can make improvements, that we can do projects that are either private projects, public projects, or a combination of both that benefit the city, the residents. You know, again, the, just amazed on how much different the city looks as I remember the kid, but I really like it, you know, I laugh when I see the pictures of the lot where the Breakwater project is, obviously, that being outside my back door and watching it going from an old dilapidated shopping center that had many memories for me to a dirt lot, which I guess had memories, but not so good memories for me to what it is now. It's just, just really awesome to see. So you know, I think that going forward, we'll just continue the the progress that goes and one bite at a time, I guess. So really awesome to see it. Thanks, Tyler.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher, and Councilmembers, Mayor Prochance Frigs.
Yeah, these bring, bring me great feelings to see this, Mr. Foltz, and most of these projects either were approved or or constructed during, during my term on the city council. And but a lot of them are, this shows the continuity of of council and city government, city staff vision for Imperial Beach, because some of them were started in early design before my term on the council by prior council members, and they deserve a lot of credit, Pier South being certainly one of those. And others took place during, during those years, and more are going to take place, you know, in years to come. And I think if we keep in mind as a council that, you know, we want great designs, we want designs that reflect Imperial Beach's commitment to being classic Southern California. We want designs that don't don't create a high-rise, high-density environment for Imperial Beach and yet provide the services and the visitor services and the, and the community services that we all need and want. I think we will be continue to be the, the best little beach town in Southern California, if not the whole state. So I look at these with a real sense of pride for what the city has accomplished, and it's an honor to have been, you know, part of many of these projects. Thank, thank you very much, Tyler, for that review.
Thanks, Mayor, Mr. Frigs, and thanks for all your help on all, a lot of these projects that I know you were engaged with and supported. Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz, for that amazing trip down memory lane.
Um, wow, I was having flashbacks, uh especially from what the breakwater um area used to look like to what it looks like now. And I'm absolutely pleased with the fact that it is aesthetically pleasing to have these projects. They absolutely are an economic driver for our city for um piquing uh investors' interests to bring their businesses here into Imperial Beach. But I'd be remiss if I don't uh point out, as the only woman on council, uh, that some of these projects also bring a di- added safety. For when you're walking around at night, you have additional lighting. Uh, I can't tell you how many times I've um, when I was a young starving student, would have to come home from um my, my, my jobs at multiple places. Taking the bus at eleven, twelve o'clock at night and uh walking by some of these empty lots or dilapidated, you know, uh strip malls. That um, you know, it was definitely a concern. And now with all of these projects, like the mobile gas station, breakwater, it's, it's amazing because you have that added sense of, of safety. For our pedestrians who are um, you know, taking public transit, especially at night. Um, I do have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Foltz. Um, do we have a status on um the, the rental space on Bike Way Village? I know that there was interest from Cornout of Brewing Company there. That area has such great potential, especially with the beautiful views of the bay. Uh, I'm just wondering, um, you know, I know it's not within our direct purview, but wondering if you know uh what the status of that is? As well as the status of the Blue Wave Project.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Gary. So for the Bike Way Village project, uh, that project also had to receive approval from the Coastal Commission. So within the original approval from the Coastal Commission, the western building had to provide a hostel. Uh, they were able to go forward and modify their approval to provide for a uh restaurant and brewery. However, because that restaurant and brewery wasn't built within a certain amount of time, the approval reverted back to a hostel. So the applicant or the property owner now uh would have to build within the parameters of that original permit, which also does allow for about six thousand square feet of retail space. Um, so the, the, the current owner is working on finding tenants. I know that they have active interest in a tenant right now, and then also working with the Coastal Commission to get any more modifications that they need to provide the uses that they're, they're seeking. So that's, that's actively going on right now. For the Blue Wave Project, uh, he, uh, they submitted uh some plans, so they're in construction plans right now. Uh, and then they have more plans to submit to the building division. So right now that's still in, in a plan check for actual construction documents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foltz, and I'll just flag for anybody who's interested in taking a visual uh trip down memory lane. Bernardo Shores um was featured on John from Cincinnati on the HBO series. So if you've never watched it, I recommend you go watch that so you can get a taste of what it looked like back then. Thank you so much.
Thanks, uh Tyler. Thanks, City Council and our city staff. Again, you know, what you don't see is the hours and hours and hours of work um that city staff had to undertake to get all those projects going. And I think it's easy to talk about being business friendly, but the fact is the city's made it a lot easier to get business done and investment done. Um, you know, in the past six years, we've had the greatest number of, the, the, the record investment in our city's history. Um, these projects account for hundreds of millions of dollars in investment. Uh, number two, the greatest numbers of jobs created in our history. Um, as we've populated the pro, the city with new projects and, and improvement, our crime rate has consistently plummeted. So um, that's just one part of a sort of a public safety strategy. Um, but it's played a big role in cleaning up our city, not included, Tyler, you couldn't do everything, but uh, you know, Councilmember Labor Gonzalez. Just fixing Thirteenth Street and putting crosswalks on Thirteenth Street, making that a lot safer. Um, cleaning up empty lots, pocket parks, doing all kinds of things. Um, you know, has led to record investment, record numbers of jobs, increased public access to our bayfront and our public resources, more park space, more workout space. Um, and uh, you know, that's, that's a good thing. Um, and, and, and our record uh revenues for the city and healthy city finances, although it obviously took a hit during the pandemic. So we're on the right track. We need to do more, and we need to figure out ways to make it less bureaucratic to open a business. As hard as it was to work with my cast, I don't think you should have to spend twenty-five million dollars to open a business in Imperial Beach and, and do a new building. I think um, that's a good template for alternative ways of, of developing projects. And I think we need to just continue to, to look at ways we can facilitate projects. And that's why, and I think they get into, you, you're, your passion, Councilmember Gary, and it's housing. That's why the main po- point of discussion with Assemblymember Chris Ward, you know, new Assemblymember was, we need money for affordable housing, great projects. We have two projects ready to go right now. Um, that if we had money, we have great projects that would improve the community, provide more housing and improve dilapidated buildings. So um, it's clearly the worst thing that ever happened in California was getting re, getting rid of redevelopment. That's why we have a housing crisis today. Cities don't have the means to build projects. And um, and so hopefully we can think about how to bring that back. But anyway, great work, city staff, great work, city council, and uh, we're gonna continue to make IB better. Um, not included was the Elm Street Project. Um, you know, that made that, that street safer, all the sidewalks that have been put in, all the streetlights have been put, put in, all the alleys that have been paved. Um, so we've done a lot, lot to, done a lot, we have a lot more to do, and especially on Highway seventy-five. We need to really focus a lot of effort on that, making that safer and more visually appealing. And really a, a part of our city that's been ignored for, you know, sixty years. So anyway, with that, um, we'll move on to item number, I think it's six. Yep. Item number six, and that's the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget calendar. And it's fine, City Finance Manager Gitmed will give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is Finance Director Joanne Gitmed, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As you're aware, the city of Imperial Beach operates on a two-year budget cycle, and our current budget cycle concludes on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So we're getting, we're beginning to start the process for our next two-year budget. So in order to assist the city with staying on track and preparing that budget, uh, we prepare a budget calendar. Now, the dates on the calendar are just kind of a guide. They're tentative and they are subject to change. So developing the budget is, is extremely time-consuming and it is a collaborative effort, and we've already begun that process. Starting in January, staff began to work on the revenue estimates, and the department heads began working on their departmental budgets. In February, we're hoping to hold meetings with department heads in order to refine the numbers that they're proposing. Um, and it's our desire to have a preliminary budget available for the city council to discuss at a budget workshop that's tentatively scheduled to be held in March. So in addition to the council workshop, and once we have the, the initial input from council, then we're hoping to have participation from the community via two public workshops in April. Now, whether those workshops are gonna be held in person or via Zoom is, is gonna depend completely on the COVID nineteen situation, and the health orders are gonna be in effect at that time. But after we have those uh workshops with the public, we're hoping to bring a draft budget to city council at their first meeting in May. And then depending on the input at that time, we're hoping for the uh adoption of the budget at either the second meeting in May or the first meeting in June. Uh, so that ultimately that budget for our next two-year cycle, which is for fiscal years twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, will be adopted by that statutory deadline of June thirtieth. So that's really kind of what we're gonna be seeing and doing over the next uh several months until we get this budget adopted. And as I said, these dates are, are tentative, um, and, and they're definitely subject to change and revamping or addition of new items. So um, that's my presentation, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Finance Manager Gitmed. Um, City Hall Kelly, do we have any public comments? City Hall Kelly, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comments.
Great. With that, um, we'll close the public comment period, um, although if you do for some reason receive comments, uh, let us know. And then uh, we will begin ca- city council discussion with Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you um Director Gitmed for the presentation. Um, I'm most interested, I mean, I'm interested in the entire budget calendar, of course, but um very much interested in the community's participation in this process. I know last year, City Manager Hall and Assistant City Manager Cortez hosted um a couple of uh budget community outreach meetings that I was able to attend. Um, and I would definitely like to see increased participation. So I'm just interested in, and it might be too premature right now. Uh, but I'm very much interested in understanding a little bit better what the outreach um effort plan is. On, and if uh, if we will provide um some of these workshop opportunities um in Spanish or in different languages.
Uh, Councilmember Gary, I, I can honestly say I don't know what the process has been in the past. My thoughts would be that we would definitely, when we're getting ready to, to handle these workshops or to schedule these workshops, that they would be posted. Not only on the city websites, but the other various social media um platforms that we have. And I know that the uh intent is to do these kind of more in a, in, an informal, open discussion, give and take kind of situation. Uh, as far as doing it in second, in a secondary language, um, I don't, I don't know how that would be handled. I, I think that would be fabulous, at least to be able to have uh somebody there to be able to help interpret. Uh, if people do have questions or concerns, because the idea is we want to get as much public input as we can.
Yes, absolutely, and I'm happy to help support that effort. Um, because I know that uh participants that have come to these workshops in the past, you know, are, are, you know, consistent citizens that are very civically engaged, that come to our council meetings. Uh, but I would like to figure out a way that we could reach uh, you know, the person that doesn't frequently come to council, but that does have a community uh, you know, concerns or priorities. Or in their daily lives that they would like to see addressed through such an important effort on our behalf as the um city's budget. So thank you for that, and I look forward to helping in any way I can.
Thank you, Councilmember Gary. Councilmember Labor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to uh piggyback on what Councilwoman Agitty had stated as far as the outreach. Um, I'd like to be involved any way I can. Um, and I'm definitely pulling for them to not be via Zoom. Really hoping and keeping my fingers crossed that um, a lot of this, where we have the opportunity to interact with residents. Um, you don't quite get the effect um via Zoom, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, it'd be nice if these meetings weren't uh held over Zoom. They were held in person, because we could bring donuts to uh Andy's Coffee uh gig and, and have a good time. So uh, looking forward to the process and going through it and then understanding what goes into it. I do know that a lot of hard work goes into uh making a budget, but uh it really needs to be one of those things where we do get some public input, just some education. So that they see where the money goes, how it gets there, and uh, you know, perhaps they might have some ideas of what we could be doing better. So looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Uh, Council, Council, Mayor Prochance Frigs.
Yes, I am, during my um pre-council briefing, I, I'd mentioned the same thing to uh the city staff. Uh, that every council member would like to be able to uh do the, uh, do this in person. We, you know, uh, Mayor, under your leadership, uh, and the full hundred percent support of every council member and city staff. We've had wonderful open house, open houses at Veterans Park uh in the past, where the city departments have had their uh poster presentations and, and tables out to answer questions. Show what, talk about the budget, their particular departmental budgets, et cetera. Uh, I would imagine our, our finance director would have a, a budget table uh at, at one of the, one of those as well going forward. My hope, and, and I, I'm right in, on the same page as everybody else, is that the COVID situation will allow us to do something outdoors, even if everybody has to still wear masks. Uh, in Veterans Park or some other appropriate outdoor location. They may have to take the mask off for a little bit to eat the hot dogs that we usually have for the public uh or other treats. Um, but uh, the community, I think, would, would come out in record numbers after the um, after what we've been through. Being uh, being forced to be inside, and we might get our best community involvement in looking at the budget, asking questions about what the city does, what it costs, who does what. The best in history, if we could find a way to get this uh outdoors where, where our community could uh, could come and see what we're all doing. Um, and also allow the council members to interact with their constituents, which we haven't been able to do uh, uh, very much. So I would say if we can't do it in, as part of the budget cycle, or even shift it so that maybe it's in May. I know that that'll take some creative scheduling regarding what, what uh the finance director has up here. But the later it goes, the more likely uh it's warmer weather, the more likely it's um further down towards the end of the um, the COVID crisis. Um, and if we aren't, for some reason, able to have a community gathering during the budget period, budget preparation period. Then as soon as possible afterwards, I think we should resume the sort of uh city open house, open houses, even if it's uh August or September or in the fall. Uh, so that we can uh begin to bring the community back into what's going on with their city government. So that's, I, I think we're all on the same page about, about doing this during the budget process. But if we can't because of COVID considerations, uh, then uh, then doing something afterwards so that we explain after the fact uh what, what's going on. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilmembers Frigs, and I was gonna bring up the issue of the Veterans Park uh outreach meeting. And I, I'm pretty sure Councilmember Fisher, you were at one of those, um, one of the last ones we had, which was super fun. Um, and you know, that's why it's gonna be important. I think, and I can't remember what tier that uh, City Manager Cortez talked about, city workers and government workers. People are out working with the public, um, get vaccinated, but it's, it's, you know, we can't continue democracy over Zoom. You guys are all correct. It's not, you know, it's not a good way to do business, and we, we need to get back in touch with the public, but hopefully we can get our staff vaccinated. So God forbid someone gets sick and gets really, really uh ill uh because we got a public meeting, right? Um, so um, I'm confident we can figure this out, and you're right, we are getting to a better place. So, but, so um, let us try to really um be creative about how we do this. I, I'm, I'm just gonna throw this out there, and usually I'm not so pessimistic, Mr. Frigs, but um, you know, just given the, the lack of participation at our city council meetings. Um, I, I think we're gonna have a challenge getting people back out and used to participating. I'm hope, I hope you're right and I'm wrong, but I think it's gonna take a lot of work to engage the public, and I think it's gonna take all of us. Which is why I think it's important to have our council colleagues in these, in the districts now, be able to engage with, with, you know, folks on a more hyper-local level. So it's gonna take all our work. All five council members are gonna have to get out there and, and really proselytize and get people out. So people get used to being back and involved in government, but I hope, I hope you're wrong. I mean, I hope I'm, I'm wrong and you're right. I hope we're all right and, and uh, we work together to really.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, 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 I'm supported by the idea of hot dogs and ice cream, so uh, maybe, maybe that'll help.
You know what? We're gonna have so many celebrations when we get back to normal. We're gonna raise so much money for concert. Uh, we're gonna figure out how to do lots more events. We all need to be in, out, and we all, our community needs to be outside with each other. Pugging it out and talking to each other, and, and our government needs to do, like you and Mr. Labor Gonzalez and Mr. Fisher said, and doing things in public, in person. That's the way government should be done, and that's where our community should be run. So we're gonna work, we'll work on that, and that's, I think that we may need to have a public workshop with our council on how to engage the public, right? How do we, no, seriously, think about it, you know, how, what are the ways? We, we're almost gonna be starting at, it's year zero, ground zero to do that, and this is an important process. So anyway, just throw it out there. Let's throw out all the rules, do things differently, have fun doing it and enjoy, right? Enjoy the, the work we do. All, all of us are community people. That's what we like the most about doing this. Even though I'm at the pier right now and the sunset's beautiful, um, and Mr. Fisher's just in a room with a background. Um, and that's hanging out at home. I'm, I'm not. And that's hanging out at home. I'm, I'm not. We'll, we'll get better at doing this. I'm sorry, it's late. It's not really that late, but we've been at a meeting for a long time. With that, any additional questions or comments? If not, we will end.
Do you have one, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, there you, okay, there you go.
Thank you. I have a general comment. I tried to get it in earlier, but I didn't get a chance. Tuesday, February 9th, inviting the general public to attend the San Diego County Board of Supervisors meeting. Item 11 will be declaring a public health crisis for the Tijuana River. And I'm sure hearing Imperial Beach's residents' perspective will be critical for that. So February 9th, item 11, County Board of Supervisors. Hopefully, everybody can make that.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll be there in person. So anyway, great. With that, I would like to adjourn the regular meeting. Thank you very much. See you, everyone. Thanks.
Take care, everyone.
Have a good night.